I call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. Today is Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. The time is 6:01 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with a roll call from my far right. Amy Carney.
Zach Lindsay.
Karen Warner.
Julie Sinowski, and I believe we have Dr. Hartwells in the cloud.
Libby Hartwells.
Thank you. All five governing board members are present. We do have a quorum this evening. I'd like to make a recommendation for modification to the agenda for the KEB executive session hearing to take place at the end of this meeting to acknowledge any schedule changes that have occurred. Is there a second for that particular motion?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Warner. All in favor, say aye.
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 That motion passes 5-0, so we will move items three, four, five, and six to the latter part of the meeting if you're following along on the distributed agenda. At this time, we will have our public hearing.
Should we approve the rest of the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Menzel. At this time, we will approve the rest of the agenda as it is published and written before us. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Warner. All in favor to approve the agenda as amended, say aye.
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 That motion passes 5-0. We will call to, we're going to go into our public hearing right now, recognizing the hearing is specifically to discuss the revised expenditure budget for the 2022-23 school year. And I call the public hearing to order. We will take a roll call again for that, starting from my far right.
Amy Carney.
Zach Lindsay.
Karen Warner.
Julie Sinowski.
Libby Hartwells.
All five governing board members are present for our public hearing. We're going to move on to 7C, the presentation on approval of the revised expenditure budget fiscal year 2223, and Shannon Crozier is going to lead that hearing.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Board President Sinowski, Vice President Warner, members of the board, Dr. Menzel and guests. Tonight, we are doing the final budget revision for the current year, fiscal year 2223. We did a revision in December, so this is just a last tidy up from after the 100th day, not a whole lot of changes. First thing to look at was with our average daily membership, our ADM, and this just shows where we originally projected things when we did this back in the spring of '22, what it was for the revision one, and the final for this revision here. So as you can see, from what we originally thought we were going to be, we actually increased our ADM by 75.75, so that's a good thing. A little bit down from where we were at revision one, part of that is because they're doing, we project out for 100 days, so above what we originally started with for the school year, which is a good thing. This looks at the changes within our maintenance and operations, and two things change within that. One, as ADM changes, that changes our budget. The other thing that took place that we didn't really have a number for is we knew that there was a new weight for the free and reduced lunch. That was new for this year, so we were kind of estimating, not really sure where that was going to land, and so for this revision, we finally know where that's at. It's at $417, almost $418,000, which is huge. That was a lot more than what we actually projected it to be, so that was a huge win for us in increasing the budget. Gifted came in at $78,000. That's about where we thought it was going to be dollar-wise, so really the changes here that came into place were change in ADM and the free and reduced lunch weight. Within our other funds, within federal grants, we had a $4.4 million carryover from our IDEA grant. That's a grant that actually goes until, there's a couple grants that go until September, and so because of that, it fluctuates with what the rollover is going to be. We don't necessarily know until things are completed, and the completions, our completion reports are done in December after this revision was done. So because of that, there was a carryover in that grant, which is not untypical, that's fairly normal for that grant. And then we got our results-based funding allocation, and so that came in later in the year, and that was 2.4 million. Outside of that, not a whole lot of changes from that second revision, those were the significant ones, so I will open it up for questions.
Governing board members, do any of you have any questions for Shannon Crozier? Dr. Hartwells, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. At this time, does anyone present have any questions or comments specifically related to the revised expenditure budget for the 2223 year at this specific time? Seeing that there are none, I would like to make a motion to approve the revised expenditure budget for 2223 school years. Are second on that motion?
Second.
Madam President, you do need a roll call vote on this motion.
Thank you. There's been a second by Board Member Carney. We are going to take a roll call vote when I call your name. Please state what your vote is regarding the approval of the revised expenditure budget. Board Member Carney? Yay. Board Member Lindsay?
Yang.
Board Member Hartwells?
Yang.
Vice President Warner? Yes. And my vote is also a yes. That motion to approve that budget passes 5-0. Excellent. At this time, I make a motion to adjourn this public hearing on our expenditure budget. Is there a second? Second. Seconded by Vice President Warner. All in favor, say aye.
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 That motion passes 5-0. We're moving on to superintendent's comments, I believe. Dr. Menzel?
Well, that happened so fast that I'm going to take a lot more time. Just kidding. So there are some really important things that I want to share, and the first, most important, is that this week, we received information that the social worker grant that we applied for, 23 of our school sites were approved for this continuation grant. It's three years' worth of funding, and it will allow us to be able to offer contracts to all of the social workers that were non-renewed at our last meeting. You remember that we had found some funding to provide some continued social worker support, but it was at a reduced level. Now, we're going to be able to restore the social workers that we had this past year, and for those 23 sites, that's a three-year funding commitment from the state. There are five sites that are still being reviewed, so it's not a no, it's just that we don't know where we are yet on that, so that's the first positive news. Secondly, several of our governing board members participated last week at the Coronado Promise Scholarship event, where 42 of our Coronado High School graduates were awarded scholarships. And the reason why I think this is important is it's been under development for some time, and 25 scholarships were initially awarded, students were notified, even though there were 42 students who met the criteria. Money is always a concern, but the partners, particularly the Charos, said, "We made a promise, we're going to honor the promise." And so to be able to provide that level of support so our students at Coronado don't have to worry about how they're going to cover the cost of the first two years of community college or trade school is pretty significant, so I want to express my gratitude for all of our partners in the Coronado Promise and the celebration of our students. I want to note just a couple of other things so that we can continue on with our agenda. Every month, a number of recognitions are established nationally, some are just created on the fly, the internet makes them up, but we try to follow what the national public school relations officials, individuals publish as the celebration. So for example, tomorrow is National Bike to School Day. On Friday, it's School Lunch Hero Day, and so I want to encourage everyone to give a shout-out to the people who work in our cafeterias, supporting our students, ensuring that they're fed every day. Friday is National School Lunch Hero Day. The month of May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. This week is National Physical Education and Sport Week. Next week is National Teacher Appreciation Week. There are some who thought that today is National Teacher Appreciation Day, although I haven't been able to confirm that, so we can expand the appreciation of our teachers to cover this weekend next. There are many, there are many partners who are offering free coffee or other kinds of treats. We know the PTOs are planning really nice celebrations in recognition of our amazing teachers here in Scottsdale Unified School District, and we want to express our gratitude for the work of our teachers every day across our 29 campuses and in Scottsdale Online. It is also National Music Week next week, and on May 10th, it's National School Nurse Day. So we have a lot to celebrate between now and the next time we meet on May 16th, but I wanted to just make sure that we elevate the breadth and depth of individuals working in our organization who are serving our students, and when we have opportunities like this, we want to make sure to give them a shout-out. The final thing that I want to point out is that on Thursday, we will be having a ribbon cutting of sorts for the Saguaro High School Living Lab. This project is really very, very cool, and we'll give you more information to talk about the breadth and depth of the project, but the partners for this living lab included Saguaro High School, Scottsdale Leadership, the McDowell-Sonoran Conservancy, and NAU and ASU. There will be actual scientific research being conducted on the campus. There are a lot of different cool components in terms of how it was built out. We look forward to showcasing that in the future, but the official ribbon cutting will be this Thursday. And with that, I'll conclude my report this evening.
Dr. Menzel, what time is that ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday?
I believe it is at 3:30, but let me confirm. 3 o'clock.
All right, thank you. You tell me 3:30, so I'm late. Okay, so it's at 3 o'clock on Thursday at Saguaro High School. Thank you. So if people wanted to attend, do they need to check in through the front office?
I would, I would touch base with Principal.
Perfect. All right. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 11, our information and discussion items. First up is 11A, our SAA, SEA, and SSPA updates. Becky Williams, Carrie Blaker, Principals Leeper and Stombros are ready to give us another riveting presentation, I believe.
I did not draw, I should have drawn. I'm not late, you adjusted the agenda before I got here. Okay. Good evening, Dr. Menzel, President Sinowski, Vice President Warner, members of the governing board, and Ms. Wagner. Through the interest-based negotiation process, our team of certified staff has worked collaboratively with the district admin team in the aim of addressing the strategic plan commitment to support employee agency innovation and retention by offering a superior compensation package in an environment where employees feel valued and enjoy contributing. Thanks to this work at a shared negotiation table where the needs of students are centered and subsequent board approval, we were able to accomplish a 2% raise to the base for all certified staff as well as an additional compensation table based on consecutive years worked in the district. That meaningfully addresses previous years of compression to the salary schedule and ensures that we retain valued, experienced educators in our classrooms with students. I would like to note that the combination of the increase to the base salary plus the additional compensation places SUSD's minimum starting salary above $50,000, a talent recruitment tool that we can be proud of. Through IBN, we are able to provide a market demand stipend for our special education teachers, and we have made significant increases to the supplemental salary schedule that aligns us with similar districts and ensures we have valued staff dedicated to developing the interests and skills of the whole child through their ability to participate in the high quality and variety of extracurricular activities that SUSD offers. high quality and variety of extracurricular activities that SUSD offers to our students. As a team, we continue to work on our Certified Employment Agreement, which we hope to have ratified by our representative membership in the coming weeks and brought to you for approval. A collaboratively established agreement is essential to the well-being of our certified employees and, in turn, our entire organization, as it establishes the working conditions through which we perform the responsibilities of our jobs each day. When employees are treated as trusted, respected professionals, they are empowered to create learning conditions in which our students thrive. As we continue this collaborative work, we remain focused on the strategic plan, ensuring that the values of excellence, integrity, empathy, trust, inclusion, and unity are woven throughout all we do, centered on what is best for students. The last thing I'd like to mention is that we hold annual elections for members who are nominated to serve voluntarily on our executive board, and we have a whole slew of members-at-large coming up on our board for next year. We do, the members-at-large serve as complex leads, and we are, is trying to establish a working relationship with the board members that also represent each complex. So we look forward to having those, our executive board members reach out to their respective governing board members and invite you to the complex meetings that they hold monthly with our members, so that you have a chance to interact with those members in a, you know, an intimate relationship basis at those meetings coming up next year. So.
Thank you, President Williams. All right. Principal Leaper, you're up next.
Am I next? I'm next. All right. Okay. Good evening, President Sanowski, Vice President Warner, members of the Governing Board, Dr. Menzel, Alan Gladys. I'm Veronica Leaper, currently serving as the elected co-president with my partner in crime is not here tonight, Grace Strombryce, as the Scottsdale Administrators Association. SAA is the representative body for principals and assistant principal in SUSD. SUSD, or SAA, would like to thank Dr. Menzel for his support of the interest-based negotiations process over the last two years. We have used the problem-solving approach to work collaboratively to build the trust and find mutual goals, supporting the interests of our district office and site-level staff, which includes administrators, teachers, and our classified personnel. Understanding the importance of the roles we all play for the success of our district and through the IBN process, we have proven that we are better together. We must lead by example, communicate openly, and build personal relationships. Governing Board policy calls for common understanding, mutual respect, and confidence between employees and the Governing Board. We work together to provide improvement for our schools, so that students are supported with high-qualified, passionate, and talented professionals. We made substantial progress in the last two years to address salary, benefits, leadership opportunities, working conditions, and employment agreements. And it's important that we continue the work through the IBN process. Dr. Menzel's leadership, and in the alignment with his vision, we have continued to provide salary increases to principals and assistant principals while aligning with the teachers' group to add a performance pay component. We have also continued the work to finalize our administrators' employee agreement. SAA has presented interests that align to our district's strategic plan and create opportunities to attract and retain highly qualified, passionate, and talented professionals, because our students deserve the best. I was reading the update from Dr. Menzel last week. I do read it. I promise, every week. Well-written every week, too. And it reminded me why I'm here today. I started my journey with SUSD in nineteen ninety-three, I'm old, as a parent volunteer and was fortunate to work with Dr. Dwayne Sheldon, who shared his experience as a superintendent at SUSD. He was the superintendent number fourteen, and there have been thirteen since he left. He had the longest tenure of ten years. He had many accomplishments in his time at SUSD, but what stood out to me in his interview is his comment about his success. He said, "I had great boards. They were not political. They were more interested in the community, and some of them, you know, would get elected because they're own kids. But no one ever focused on their own. They wanted good things for the community." I loved that. And so to each member of this Governing Board, your service on the board must be at the same interest of our district and our strategic plan for the benefit of all students attending Scottsdale Unified School District. Please defend the right of each of our students to a world-class, future-focused education.
Thank you, Principal Leaper. Ms. Blaker?
Good evening, Governing Board President Sanowski, Governing Board Members, Dr. Menzel, Gladys, and guests. It gives me great pleasure to be here with you tonight, representing the classified staff. In our SSPA update, I would like to express hope for finishing this year strong by following our district's newly adopted core values. For the record, let it be known that our updates have never been scripted together or orchestrated by an agenda, only speaking from our interests and our pleas. I find it amazing that whenever we do come together at the podium, our messages seem to align, which brings me back to the core values. We believe in the excellence of our district. As you visit the sites, please take time to notice and recognize how, with empathy, we all unite to get our jobs done with integrity to the finish line. We want to trust that you will choose inclusion of your education support professionals when it comes to decision-making and voting. We look forward to a positive partnership with those that want to create an equitable environment where everyone is respected, treated with dignity, and has a sense of belonging. These are our district's core values that we support. Many of your classified staff have expressed confusion and uncertainty when it comes to attending these meetings or watching them online. It appears that individuals come to these meetings just to split the room. We work so hard. Let's focus on the positive, as there's so much to celebrate all around us. Our district is strong, rich in history, and has gotten through some seriously tough times because we stuck together. Our students are our future, and that is why we are all here, to celebrate our students. We are a destination district for many families and staff members. Let's continue to lead with positivity by supporting our staff and our students and celebrating their successes. We are SUSD-strong because we are better together.
Thank you, Ms. Blaker. Are there any questions for these presenters from the board at this time? Dr. Hartwell, do you have any?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Not? Okay. Thank you all for your leadership this year, throughout this year, and continued work for the best interest of our district at large. Thank you. And we're going to move on to 11B. That is the City of Scottsdale Auditor's Report and Management Response for the Scottsdale Unified School District's Human Resources Organizational Functions. And I believe that's going to also include an overview of the hiring process at some point in time.
So, Madam President, we have Leigh Cluff from the City of Scottsdale, along with Alexis Wilson. Ms. Cluff led the audit of our HR department, and the information that she's sharing tonight was shared with the Audit Committee previously. We look forward to hearing your presentation.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Menzel. Welcome, Ms. Cluff.
There you go. Sorry. Red is on. I was hoping for green. Sorry. Okay, I'll start over. Good evening, President Sanowski, Governing Board Members. My name is Leigh Cluff. I am the Acting City Auditor for the City of Scottsdale. We recently completed an audit of SUSD's human resources. I'll briefly go over the findings and recommendations, and then the Assistant Superintendent over HR will go over their action plan related to these recommendations. As part of the IGA between the city and the school district, last August, the Governing Board and the City Council approved an audit of the district's HR function. We submitted our report and presented it to the Audit Committee in March. At the beginning of our report, you'll find a one-page highlights of the audit results. At the left of the page, you'll see information about the objective and scope of the audit. The audit's objective was to examine the district's human resources organizational functions, including its strategic and operational planning and staffing services. In its 2022 strategic plan, the district identified as one of its goals to attract, hire, develop, support, and retain highly qualified, passionate, and talented professionals. Our review focused on the department's ability to help meet this goal and the processes that relate to recruiting, hiring, and retaining employees. On the right side of the page, you'll see that our audit findings are summarized and recommendations. I'll go over each of these briefly. Sorry, I'm having trouble with maneuvering here. The first finding is related to improving the reliability and availability of data to better inform retention strategies and performing performance monitoring. Our overall recommendations in this area are relating to identifying and understanding the data that is available and using it to analyze turnover and the potential causes for turnover. Analyzing turnover has been a challenge for the department, and we use termination data to estimate an overall turnover rate and summarize separation reasons. However, this data could be further leveraged in addition to, well, obtaining further information and also perhaps more descriptive information be collected. We also reviewed absence and substitute data, which the district can use to properly size its substitute pool and provide information on which grade, subjects, or locations may need more support. Finding two is recruiting effectiveness may be improved by monitoring recruitment progress and metrics, increasing HR oversight and standardizing procedures. The HR department has had many active recruitments at any given time. In February, when we last reviewed it, there were about two-hundred-and-seventy open job postings. To be able to manage all of those, we recommend that the department standardize its recruitment processes, streamline its job postings, and establish processes to monitor the progress of recruitments. For example, the recruitment system can be used to document the screening process, schedule interviews, and log other communications, but some of these features were not consistently used. Standardizing these procedures and establishing target timelines would allow HR to verify that required steps were being completed and recruitments were moving along. For certified teacher recruitments, we recommend that the procedures for new teacher salary placement be refined and formalized to improve transparency and equity, and that procedures be established to track and monitor any pending certifications at the time of hire. The last finding is process improvements are needed to alleviate workload pressures and help the department move towards its strategic goals. Increased turnover and recruitment also come with a higher number of personnel action requests for HR to process. For the period that we reviewed, August 2021 through August 2022, a large portion of personnel action requests were completed after the requested effective date for the change. As shown in Figure Four on Page Eighteen of the report, there was a marked delay in processing times last May and June, which also coincided with staffing turnover within the HR department at the time. These delays can be, can have implications for hiring and termination, such as delaying first and last paychecks. Moreover, timely processing of terminations is needed to ensure that facilities and system access are promptly removed. In addition to streamlining the review process, establishing timeline goals, and written procedures, we also recommend that more comprehensive exit checklist for both supervisors and HRs be, and HR be implemented to ensure that required items are collected and stakeholders are notified upon termination. Within HR, the termination process should also include deactivation of user accounts for HR systems. That concludes my presentation of the audit findings. I'll hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Alexis Wilson to go over the district's management action plan, and afterwards, I'm available to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Good evening, President Sanowski, members of the board, and Dr. Menzel. So I'm going to do a thirty-thousand-foot review of the findings and our current status and response as it pertains to the audit. First, I'd just like to thank the City of Scottsdale and Leigh Cluff and Elizabeth Brandt for their work with us during this audit. And if I might add, there were not a whole lot of surprises for me, so it confirmed some things that I knew were necessary, but it's always nice to have another set of eyes to look at these things. So in response to the first finding, the termination reasons, we, in the current VISIONS PAR system, the particular termination code that was being used is very vague and does not give us more reason, or any more information as to why somebody may be leaving. However, we do conduct an exit survey, and we can gather some of that information through that. Additionally, in working with our ERP, Enterprise Resource Analyst, we have other codes in VISIONS already that we can use that might say resignation, or retirement, resignation due to location change, so more specific information. And then we can glean that data right out of the system instead of working in two different areas to better inform our reasons that people are leaving. So we are working on that. It is not in place yet, because that would also require that we do some training for all of the users in the schools, in the departments, supervisors, on how to do that. And additionally, we are looking at an electronic resignation. Right now, people submit a form. They might email their supervisor. That email gets forwarded to us. PARs get completed with an attached letter to it. An electronic resignation or retirement through the system would enable somebody to do that on their own, because I can be known to be forgetful and forget to forward an email that says I'm resigning until somebody reminds me that that has happened. So this would put the onus on the person that's actually doing the retirement or the resignation, and we can better track all of that data as well. Additionally, regarding the substitute finding, at the time that the audit started, since August, we have hired over two-hundred substitutes. Our fill rates are not at our goal of at least ninety percent, but I can tell you, compared to last year, our daily rates are hovering in the low eighties to the mid-eighty percent fill rate, so we're in much better shape than we have been. Additionally, we increased the daily rate for substitutes back in the fall, and you recently approved an additional two percent increase to substitute pay that will go into effect starting for the next school year. So we're hopeful that we will continue. I also, we had conducted a substitute survey in January, I believe, to get some more data. And the demographic finding from that is that the majority of our substitutes are my age or older, and they are choosing to only substitute one to two days a week because they can, and that's what they want to do. And one day, I hope to be able to do that same thing myself. So we need to target more of those people, because that seems to be the largest demographic that wants to do the substitute. I just need them, you know, if these two are going to substitute Monday and Tuesday, I need a couple more to do Wednesday and Thursday and Friday. So we continue to work on recruiting for substitutes. Additionally, you know, this is the part where I tell you that we, while we have been short-staffed, in order to do the work that needs to be done to make the human resources team provide the most exceptional customer service to both our internal and external stakeholders, it is my belief that we need additional staff. What we would like to do is have a staff, an HR specialist, that would service each learning community. And that would also help with all of the things that we're talking about that showed up in these findings. So if someone is being hired, or someone is being, is resigning or retiring, you'd have a specialist devoted to a learning community, and departments that would work with that community have a smaller scope of responsibility, whereas right now, I have one person who handles certified and one that does classified. And we try to get others on the team to help, but they have other responsibilities as On the next finding, recruiting effectiveness that could be improved, again, the principals have seen previously the hiring process that they're to follow. We have processes for hiring individuals, both classified, certified, and administrative. In the case of, for example, principal hiring process, we have a staff meeting. We have a meeting with the parents to inform them of what the process is going to look like. We gather their feedback on the characteristics they're looking for in their leader. We have a, we screen applications to make sure that individuals meet the requirements for the position or are, have the capability of getting that in time for the start of the school year. We have a screening, we screen the applicants, and then we have a screening interview. And so usually, we have about- so usually, we have about 10 that are in the screening interview. After that is completed, we might reduce it to four or five. Then they go to a panel of parents, a certified, classified, district administration, the supervising either Dr. Saccos or Ms. Serna, depending on the elementary or middle or high school status, myself, or a member of the human resources team to help conduct those. And then we do requisite background checks, reference checks, and such before we bring a recommendation forward. Principals at the site do, they may not do exactly what I just outlined, but they do typically include, so if they need to hire a fourth-grade teacher, they might have a member of the fourth-grade team on that committee. They may have a classified person on there, and they are asking scripted questions so that every person gets the same question. Reference checks must be completed, they must make a phone call to the most, to the current or the most recent supervisor to verify that they are a strong recommendation, and then they recommend to human resources to hire that particular person. The same is true for classified staff. We do have some process improvements needed in that area, some training for all to make sure that we're all abiding by those things, and we hope to get that accomplished at our admin academy in the summer. Regarding the postings, thankfully, Dr. Lugo joined us in January, and the team has been working very hard in cleaning up the multitude of postings, duplicate postings, to make it look, and also streamline the way we post for certain positions, so there's a standard format for that. And also, thank you to Dr. Lugo. We have a new higher teacher placement schedule in place for the 23-24 school year. So based on your years, anyone can go to the Human Resources tab on the left-hand side, Human Resources Documents. You will see salary schedules. If you're a certified teacher in another district looking to come over to Scottsdale Unified School District, we are hiring, so you can start applying now, and you will be able to easily identify where you would be placed on your own without even having a conversation. We will obviously confirm that, but years of experience are on the left side, education is across the top. So if you have a master's plus zero degrees and you've got three years of service, you'll be able to look over and find exactly where you are. Very, very grateful for that work having been done. Again, additional staff to ensure that we can service our internal and external stakeholders would be most beneficial to the organization and, quite frankly, in our ability to recruit, to keep communication lines open as people are servicing a community and not hundreds of folks, perhaps especially right now as we are in the 90 Days of May, as we call it in HR. Lastly, the process improvements to alleviate workload pressures, as Ms. Clough outlined. We have some training materials, thankfully, in working with both of our IT department and with our ERP analyst. We have documents created on how PARs are to be completed, when they should be completed. However, we have to, we have folks that are new, we have folks that need refresher trainings, and we need to set up a timeline to ensure that those continue to be timely. People need to be, go through HR orientation before they can start work. People need to be properly, when I say terminated, you know, through the PAR system so that we can process payments in a timely manner as well. I'm very thankful to Edna Moore, our ERP analyst and IT. We've all been working very hard for more than a year now to clean up the data that is in the system. It was not clean. It's not perfect, but it's definitely in a better place than it was previously. Restricted user access primarily was regarding the HR team. Certain members had higher-level access than necessary, so we've changed some of those processes as well, and again, with some people outside of the system as well to narrow it to their scope of responsibility. So other support needed is we've got to do mandatory training for all administrators and support staff that are responsible for processing PARs, both for new hires, pay-change PARs, when people resign or are retiring, and we need to make sure that everybody's on the same page and understands the importance of timeliness, of doing it correctly so that people get processed accordingly. And additionally, I don't have an exact name, but something along the lines of someone who would be responsible for compliance, so ensuring that all of our fundamental trainings, that people are completing those in a timely manner, making sure that we're assigning the right training. Sometimes there are too many out there, and we don't want to overburden people unnecessarily. Someone that could assist, I probably am feeling the heat right now behind me from a few principals who are concerned about Talend Ed Perform when we're talking about observations and evaluation. It can be better. It's not that way when Alexis is in charge of it, though. So a person that could support the software systems that support the HR things that have to have happened. So we have Talend Ed Records, Talend Ed Perform, and Talend Ed Recruit and Hire, so someone that can stay on top of all of those platforms in addition to compliance trainings, running the data, making sure we are in compliance with trainings, with necessary paperwork that has to be conducted every year. And I think that is it for a high-level overview. Happy to answer any questions.
Board members, do you have any questions for Ms. Wilson at this time? You're not coming on it, yes, okay. Vice President Warner.
So, well, Ms. Clough, this was absolutely an incredible report that you provided, and you came and presented at the audit committee. It's so detailed and really impressive that I needed to give you a shout-out for that. That's all for you. So thank you, we appreciate it. Alexis, I have two questions for you. How many staff members are in your organization right now on your organizational chart?
That is a good, off the top of my head, we just, 12 or 13 right now.
Okay, 12 or 13. Can you either send the board or maybe just point me in the right direction of where we can find the job descriptions for all the different positions in your department?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. That's it.
Board Member Carney. Thank you both for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions here. In the, in the audit, did you, was there a actual turnover rate that you came to?
Yes, for fiscal year '21-'22, we estimated roughly 19%, almost 20% for, overall for the district-wide number. It's possible to drill down a little bit more by position or school if that data is clean enough to do. We just didn't have enough information to be able to get down to that level.
And then, how about training for substitutes when it comes to security and safety? I know that we had talked about that they don't have or haven't been properly trained for site-level security, or is that something that's going to happen, or where are we at with that?
President Sanowski, Ms. Carney, yes, we would like to do more of that. There's, we've had discussions with Mr. Friedman, with Dr. Watt, just about some of the access things. That one's a little more difficult. However, we have talked about what we can do as far as when a substitute shows up on campus that day for a position or for a job, providing them with some materials around what to do in the event of fire drill. Typically, a teacher has those materials in their folder in their classroom, but it would not hurt to have a second set, you know, handed out at the front office just to provide a review for those folks.
Great, yeah, I think it's something that we definitely need.
We could certainly also add a bit of it to our orientation. I would certainly want to work with Mr. Friedman on that. That topic alone is worth a lot of time in addition to what we do in our HR orientation, so we can certainly talk about that.
Awesome, thank you. And then I know you touched on the exit surveys, so say for now, employees who are resigning, what does the exit survey process look like?
President Sanowski, Ms. Carney, right now, when a person resigns or retires, they submit the PAR, and then, right now, Carly Mesa will email them a link to the survey. She has not sent that yet because we are in the middle of transitioning between two years, but it will happen prior to the end of the school year, so we can gather that feedback. We do have some from earlier in the year already, but we will send out one mass email to all of those folks.
And what's the platform we use for that survey?
Currently, right now, it is Survey Monkey.
Okay. And then lastly, I'm, you touched on the principal hiring process, and I'm hearing from parents at Cheyenne, because that's, you know, we're in the process of hiring there, that they haven't heard anything, that they haven't been asked to be involved, they're not involved, they're getting nervous. So could you kind of go through the principal process for Cheyenne and what that looks like and how people can be involved?
So we sent out a link for parents that they were interested in participating in that, and so we have conducted the interviews for that, and we are very, 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 very close to making an announcement. So we did have a lot of, we had a parent meeting, and there were a dozen or so, maybe two dozen, parents in attendance, so we had some conversations there, and then we had two parents participate on the, on the actual interview. So we know they're waiting, we've just been waiting to finalize a couple of things on our end.
Okay, so there was a link that went to all the parents to be able to apply to be on the committee, or?
In addition to the link that went out to gather their input regarding what characteristics they were looking for in their new, next principal, there was a link to sign up if they wanted to volunteer to be a part of the interview panel.
Okay, great, thank you. Board Member Lindsey.
In the report, it talks a lot about salary schedule placement, but it primarily focuses on teachers. We have our three associations who've worked a lot with the district to improve salary placement. The one area we don't is district-level admin. What did the city review district-level admin placement?
At the time, we didn't look at the administrator level quite as much. There weren't quite very formalized procedures in place at the administrative level, whereas the teacher one was a little bit easier for us to evaluate, so that's the one that we decided, and because it was a larger portion of the number of employees. So we did look at the administrators kind of on a sample basis, but we didn't look at that particular salary placement process individually.
President Sanowski, Mr. Lindsey, however, we are looking at it and trying to get a placement schedule because it would make all of our lives easier as well. So it is, because it was a smaller pool, as Ms. Clough pointed out, we do try to honor those folks that have been in Scottsdale. We don't bring in folks from outside and place them any higher than someone with the same level of experience. So it would be a lot easier, though, if we had a plan, much like we do for the teachers. So we're working on it. Those things take time because you've got to look at where people are and figure out a placement that will honor people that are here and also enable us to recruit people in and make sure that we're being fair to all.
And then in the report, it has HRFT at 14, so if we add five, assuming full-time people, can we see how that would compare with our peer districts? Because a lot of those districts on there, I wouldn't consider our peers.
If you, did you say if we had five? Because my heart just did lots of loops of joy.
You said add one for each learning community.
Right, so we have, we currently have two specialists. We had three, and one just recently got promoted, so that's a good problem for us to have. And I know Ms. Clough did some comparison, and she has that, and I think there are some nuances to some of that peer group data as well, and also some nuances just discussed at Unified School District as well. So we would like to ideally have a specialist per learning community, and then we also have someone who just handles our FMLA. We've got a HR coordinator, a classified coordinator. I'm missing, our receptionist just moved out of state, so that would be another, and she helps out in some ways, but not as a specialist, per se, so it would certainly be beneficial.
Anything else, Board Member Lindsey? No. Dr. Hartwells, do you have any questions or comments on this presentation?
Yes, thank you, Board President Sanowski. Thank you, Ms. Clough. Thank you for coming back and doing yet another great job. And I did have one, one question about the analysis. Was the reliability of the online application portal considered or tested?
Thank you for that question. We did have some concerns about when we were going to evaluate performance metrics of some of that information. For example, looking at the timeframe for when an application is submitted to when the applicant may be hired, that information was not quite consistently entered, or I don't know if it is entered, but maybe the application dates were not always the correct dates, maybe because the application had been re-uploaded at some point or had not been entered, and so we couldn't quite come to those metrics. So in that regard, some of the data in the application system, we couldn't quite use for evaluating performance metrics.
Thank you, that's helpful. Ms. Wilson, I know that there's been some discussions over the course of several months where we've had anecdotal feedbacks from prospective applicants who've had trouble with our online portal system. Can you comment on that and what you, your team has done to hopefully troubleshoot and/or remedy?
President Sanowski, Dr. Hartwells, the application system is in need of a reboot. I can tell you from firsthand experience and as you're talking about anecdotal as well. It certainly, to Ms. Clough's point, can be utilized more than it is. I think we might be inefficient in our use of it, but also, I would say, the layout of it as well could be refined and improved. We have a conversation with Power Schools who overowns Talend Ed and many other things, and now they scheduled for Thursday to talk about some of these things as well.
Okay, great, I'm glad to hear that, thank you. I have no further questions, but again, thank you very much for the presentation and the rigorous analysis, and we'll look forward to seeing progress on that management plan.
Thank you, Dr. Hartwells, and thank you for asking that question, Dr. Hartwells, because that was actually first and foremost on my mind, and I want to, I just have a question. Did you just go in and test the online system yourselves, like as an applicant? Was that part of this process at all?
No, we didn't go to that extent, but what we did was look at the paperwork and kind of compare it to the information that was in the system. So actually, I think I misspoke with the last question. It's not the application dates that we had issue with, it was more the hire dates. Within the application system, we couldn't always tell when the person was hired and sometimes to which correct application they were hired for, because an applicant may submit multiple applications but only be hired for one of them, and if that status isn't correctly entered into the system, we couldn't always match it up with an employee position or an employee that was hired to come to that evaluation. So, no, we didn't go in and try to put in an application ourselves, but we used the data that was available and compared it to the HR records that we were able to review to see what was different.
Might I recommend that that happen? Because I think the best results are the results that the user experiences with our system. If we are not able to even consider great applicants to our district, we're never going to have them in our district. So I think that's really important for us to take a look at what it's like for an outside applicant. I know it's a little bit different inside from that perspective for an outside applicant with not just the application process, but also submitting their paperwork. And then the follow-up, are we sending them a message saying, "We received your application"? Is there a tracking system to then recognize? They might have, they might think they have everything in, but maybe they're really just missing one thing that's holding up this. missing one thing that's holding up this process, screening process, for moving forward, and what they see is that SUSD hasn't gotten back to them, and it may be on their end, but we don't know that and they don't know that. So I think that's really a powerful way for us to learn, is through our own experiences.
President Sanowski, a board member is going to add one more comment to your question. The system does keep track of communications that it automatically generates for confirmations and such, so we were able to view when the system sends out a confirmation that the application was received. Where we had some concerns, there may be system responses for when an applicant is no longer being considered for a position, whether that message is going out. If the staff don't properly adjust the status of that application, it might not send out that, that email. And the other area that we did look at was from the user experience, what does the website look like? Is it easy to find jobs or is it kind of cumbersome? And to that extent, we looked at other districts' job sites, some of them that use the same platform, and there were variations in how it could be configured, and that, those are some of the recommendations that we made to the HR department.
Thank you, Ms. Clough. I think that that is very valuable information, just overall in general. I know sometimes district public schools in general are told, you know, "We really want transparency." Well, this is a way for our district to get transparency on our hiring process. Not all districts go to this extent, to go through a comprehensive audit, to find out what we're doing well, but also what we need to improve upon. I think that takes bravery to do that, and I really appreciate that, because it's not about pointing the finger and blaming anyone for what, what is not perfect, but it's identifying how we can be better. So I really appreciate that opportunity for us to not just look out the window and determine, you know, where we want to go, but also to pull that mirror back to us and identify what we're doing specifically. Because I think all of us, all of us in this room and all of our employees can identify things that we do well, but also things that we need to work on to improve. So I really appreciate, Ms. Wilson, since you've come on board, I've seen the progress, and so I thank you for your willingness to be a brave leader, because that does set an example to all others, not just in the department, but being able to admit, "We need to improve on that," or "I apologize," or whatever. So thank you, I know that was a little more than this audit information, but I think it, it's important. I also really appreciate the idea of coding why someone is leaving the district, because I recall last year, the local news media inaccurately reported that we had a 30% turnover in staff, and they were, well, what was the reason why? They weren't all quitting the district, and I think that was, the deception there was 30% of our employees left because this was a horrible place to work. That's not accurate. So I think by having a click the box is really important, to be able to identify why people are leaving, and even if they're leaving the district or resigning, like another dropdown of, "Well, why are you leaving?" You know, so whether it's compensation or work conditions, or they're moving, or they got a better paying job somewhere else, those are things I think that we can continue to improve our process as a district by knowing that information. So I really liked that idea. And to clarify, you said you already have two specialists right now that support this hire-to-retire idea in our district?
President Sanowski, right now, we have two HR specialists that are working not just on these PARS, helping with certified, classified hiring and termination PARS, but they are also helping with placing student teachers, volunteers, just about anything we ask of them. We have another HR specialist who is solely responsible for FMLA and our LOAs, and fills in when necessary on workers' compensation issues. So one HR specialist was just promoted to a coordinator position that would oversee and help train and provide that extra layer of support for the HR specialists so that they could service. So if we had, again, one per community, another one that could help with the departments, because transportation, nutrition, those departments have facilities, custodians and such, have a high level of, of need and support, that would be very, very beneficial to the organization, and, and to your point, to recruiting people in and getting them timely, getting them processed timely. I would be remiss, though, if I did not give a shout-out to the HR team who daily works their rear ends off in doing the very best they can.
Sure.
And when I say the 90 Days of May, it's started back in March, but they are an awesome team, doing yeoman's work, and really very, very grateful for them. So I think some additional support for them so that we can continue to provide that high level of service would, would really benefit everybody.
I do, I do see great benefit for our district to have a specialist by a learning complex. People know who to go to, anything related, whether it's their benefits or their FMLA, whatever, they, they know who to go to, instead of trying to search down the path to who's the right person to communicate for this. So love that idea.
And I would piggyback to, sorry, I just, just a little passionate about this.
Me too.
That when, if you have a specialist who specializes in just one thing, when that person leaves, that's really difficult. If you have five specialists that service a learning community, if one of them happens to be sick or out, or those other people know what to do, they're just stepping in to help in that other area, so.
Sure. And I do agree with what Board Member Carney mentioned about our substitutes, and I don't think that handing them a folder with the written information in is appropriate. I think that any substitute that's going to be coming into our district, as with all of our employees, they need to go through safety training and protocol in person, face to face, and figure out what, if they're going to, if they're going to pick certain schools, they need to understand protocols, basic ones on that campus, but from a safety perspective, I, I think, because I remember having it in my subfolder, there's no guarantee a substitute's going to read that. I mean, often they come in and it's like hit the ground running, so they don't often have time to go through that, especially if they're new to our district. So I'd like to really suggest that that important training happens in person.
One last thing on that, President Sanowski, we do have fundamentals training that has some of that, that everyone has to take, and that, I have to check to see if that is one, but there are mandated ones, they do have to complete as well as a substitute mandatory reporter, things of that nature, so we can certainly add and reinforce.
All right, I love that, thank you. Dr. Menzel?
Well, I want to first thank both Ms. Clough and Ms. Wilson for the work on this. It's evidence of our commitment to continuous improvement and in alignment with Strategic Plan Goal Three of attracting and retaining talent. And when we think about process improvement, I appreciate the questions from the governing board tonight, because I think it, it illustrates we are on a journey and we're not there yet. And I had a conversation with Board Member Werner, last week I think it was, regarding some HR questions that we had around a previous hiring decision, situation, and Ms. Wilson outlined how we do that with principals. There were requests for information, I misunderstood some of the requests, and so we, we were already talking about how do we put in place the kinds of information that governing board members want and need to see in order to be able to make informed decisions, related to the recommendations that we're bringing forward. And I think it's, it's about all of us coming to the table, recognizing that there's always an opportunity for improvement, and I appreciate, to the point you made, Ms. Sanowski, the willingness to be vulnerable and have the conversation in the public space like this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clough and Ms. Wilson, you did it twice. There we go. We are going to move on to Agenda Item 11C, which is the first read of our Secondary Science Curriculum Adoption, and I believe Dr. Dodds, Karen, and Ms. Kaiser are going to lead that conversation.
Awesome.
Good evening, thank you, thank you for having us. Good evening, Board President Sanowski, Vice President Werner, governing board members, including you, Dr. Hartwells in the cloud, Dr. Menzel Gladys, members of our public who are present here tonight and also listening online. We appreciate the time this evening for this first read of the Secondary Science Curriculum Adoption Committee recommendations. Tonight, you will learn of the four-month journey of the committee that has ultimately brought us to the curriculum recommendations we are proud to present tonight. The process of preparing for and executing a curriculum adoption of this scale is no small feat. It is therefore essential that I recognize the organization, communication, and collaboration of Johanna Kaiser, our district science coach, and DeeDee Johnston, our curriculum materials specialist who's listening online. What is not presented today, but what is very essential to this process, are the countless layers of planning and the partnering, which includes but is not limited to working with SUSD staff district-wide, such as staff within our teaching and learning team, our partners in the warehouse, IT, communications, finance, our vendors, and our publishers, just to name a few. Together, they were able to coordinate material deliveries, unbox materials, set up materials, rebox materials, obtain laptops from IT for digital access of curriculum, they've created schedules for shifts to ensure that a member of teaching and learning would always be available at the Oak Campus for public display. They shared documents weekly for posting with communications to our district website, they've organized vendors and substitutes for presentation days, and the list goes on and on. These two, while they happened to know each other from living in the SOWARL learning community for many years, they became fast and trusting colleagues, for which I am forever grateful. So I want to say thank you to Johanna and DeeDee, because without your collaboration, we would not be where we are today, and you know that, I think you know that. And so now to share the details of the process and some key factors guiding the work, and ultimately, the recommendation of the Secondary Science Curriculum Adoption Committee, I'm going to ask Johanna to continue with the presentation here at the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Dodds. Good evening, everyone. What a pleasure it is to be here today to present this evening. The goal of this committee was to review and evaluate instructional materials and provide recommendations to the governing board for adoption of these materials. The committee's goals align to SUSD's strategic plan. During the first committee meeting, we reviewed the strategic plan, and the recommendations placed in front of you today align with this plan, especially in the highlighted text shown here. The recommended curricula make students future-ready, they demand critical and creative thinking, they're a problem-based learning focus, and they provide resources for differentiated The committee was composed of 29 members and included teachers, district employees from various departments, parents, and community members. Many of the committee members are here tonight to show their support for the committee's recommendations. We'd like to invite any members of the committee and the audience to stand at this time and be recognized for your hard work and dedication to selecting high-quality instructional materials for our students. I told them it might be a little bit later because of the agenda items, so some might struggle in around 7:15. SUSD is truly grateful for your participation in 10-plus committee meetings over the past four months, and hours of learning, collaboration, and reviewing materials, by the way, all after a hard day of work in the classroom and in their professions. This was all done from 4:00 to 6:30 PM most nights. Teachers from all five brick-and-mortar high schools were on the committee, and there was representation from every learning community on the middle school group. Experience ranged from second-year teachers to veteran department heads, which allowed the materials to be viewed from multiple teaching perspectives. SUSD currently has 88 secondary science teachers, and with 20 classroom teachers serving on this committee, that makes 23% of all secondary science teachers represented on the committee. A very special thank you goes to our parent and community members who participated. They have undergraduate degrees and graduate degrees in biology, chemistry, physics, naturopathic medicine, and engineering, and work as project managers, chemical engineers, attorney, professor at SEC, and work in the medical field. They brought a valuable voice to the table, and we are grateful for their service to the district. Our committee was organized, thorough, inclusive, and meaningful. Well, okay, we know there's a lot of text on this slide, we wanted to share a few statements from the committee members as they reflected on their participation in the process. I'm also going to share one quote from the committee, from a community, community member from SEC Science Department faculty member, Philip Root. "I appreciate the support of all the members of the committee and the leadership of Johanna. It was great seeing how we could put the principles of the Arizona Science Standards into practice, identifying and recommending curricula to help our SUSD students do science." And in his email, the "do" is capitalized and bolded. We'd like to review with the governing board an overview of this extensive process and highlight a few key events that occurred throughout. This process began on January 4th, when information about the committee and an application to serve on the committee was posted to SUSD's committee hub. Since then, the Secondary Science Curriculum Adoption Committee webpage linked in the slide communicates internally and externally the work that has been happening. There, anyone can find information on the committee, including meeting, agendas, minutes, presentations, a list of committee members, goals and objectives of the committee, and information about public review, which are posted in order to transparently share what has occurred during this process. Our committee kicked off on January 26th with professional development on the Arizona Science Standards, Next Generation Science Standards, Three-Dimensional Science Teaching and Learning in Phenomena, so we could all be on the same page with our criteria and rubric. The committee then created the rubric, engaged in calibration activity, and began reviewing materials. Approximately 83 materials reviewed, and committee members completed 276 evaluations on our rubric. Based on rubric scores and evaluation of the curriculum's learning platforms and resources, groups narrowed the submissions and invited select publishers for vendor presentation days. Parallel to this work, starting Friday, March 3rd, materials have been on display for public review. Members of the public can go to SUSD's Oak Campus from 8:30 AM to 3:00 PM on SUSD school days to review proposed materials. Additionally, one can make an appointment to view materials outside of those hours or on non-school days. There's a public feedback Google form where input on materials can be submitted. Public review of proposed materials continues through May 16th at SUSD's Oak Campus. Additionally, to provide an opportunity for teachers not serving on the committee to review materials, we hosted a Secondary Science Teacher Curriculum Review Open House after school on April 5th. Teachers attended, reviewed materials, submitted feedback on the public review Google form. As a further layer, teacher committee members acted as liaisons and shared information with teachers at their sites to keep them informed and to seek their input. Thus far, 17 teachers submitted 29 responses on the public review Google form, which were then shared anonymously with committee as additional information to guide their decisions. When you combine the number of teachers on the committee and the number of teachers who submitted feedback on public review, 42% of our 88 science teachers contributed formal feedback to the selection of these materials. After hours of evaluating materials, reviewing inputs submitted on the public review Google form, listening to presentations given by publishers on vendor presentation days, the committee came together on April 20th. Content groups engaged in the consensus process, selected the recommended materials for their group, presented to the committee at large, and the committee approved group recommended materials for approval to the governing board. As mentioned earlier, the committee created a rubric to evaluate materials. Using many resources, primarily the Arizona Science Standards, resources provided by our Arizona Department of Education's Guidance for Evaluating High-Quality Instructional Science Materials resource page, and other curriculum evaluation tools from other states, the committee developed a rubric strongly adapted from the EQUIP rubric for science. The SUSD rubric divided 21 criteria into three sections. The first section, 3D Design, includes elements such as explaining phenomena, aligned with Arizona Science Standards three-dimensional design, Arizona Science Standards' three-dimensional design and scientific accuracy. A material had to meet a minimum score on this first section for the review to continue. The second section, Instructional Supports, included elements such as building progressions and unit coherence, differentiated instruction resources, and relevance and authenticity, ensuring that students engage in authentic and meaningful experiences. The third section, Monitoring Student Progress, required viewers to consider how students would be obsessed and the many ways they would demonstrate their knowledge of both the science core ideas and the practices associated with scientific inquiry. Evaluating materials on the rubric was a key supporting process in selecting materials. Another key component to a process of our committee was the use of consensus decision-making. This is a process that the teaching and learning team committed to developing for consistent use across teaching and learning district committees. On our first meeting day, the committee reviewed this process, it's on this slide, and also established the norm, support the group's recommendation after consensus is reached. This process was critical to have in place so that all voices were heard and that the committee would actually accomplish its goal of submitting recommended materials to the governing board for approval. This first adoption cycle included the courses listed on this slide. The adoption of new materials is essential as they will replace materials that predate the 2018 Arizona Science Standards and the Next Generation Science Standards. AP Physics 1 and 2 are on there because they are new courses to SUSD and needed curriculum as AP Physics 1 launches at one school next year with more schools to follow in the coming years. These courses were selected for the first round of curriculum adoption because of their prevalence in the updated high school science course pathways that the governing board approved earlier this year and the number of students impacted. And so, without further fanfare, here are the proposed materials for adoption. For our high school courses, the committee recommends: For Biology 1, National Geographic Biology; For Chemistry 1, Experience Chemistry; Physics 1, Pure Physics, Physics Through Evidence, Empowerment Through Reasoning; For AP Physics 1 and 2, College Physics, Explore and Apply. And as is common with SUSD AP courses, the committee also recommends Fast Track to 5 Test Prep for AP College Physics for students to have as an additional resource for AP test preparation. It's important to note that these materials will support both AP Physics 1 and AP Physics 2, two different courses. For middle school, the committee recommends Elevate Science Units: Earth's Place in the Universe, Structures and Properties of Matter, Earth Systems, Systems Reproduction and Growth, Changing Earth and Human Activity, and Delta Education's Foss, Heredity and Adaptation: Next Generation. All of these materials have some common rationale along with so much more, but they are aligned to Arizona Standards and AP course content. They're phenomena-forward and have meaningful storylines that support student sense-making. They're inquiry-based. They require critical thinking. It provides, they all provide scaffolds to support all learners and can be used for honors and on-level courses. Are lab-active engagement and investigation-heavy. Additionally, the committee asked for and reviewed curriculum efficacy studies from these publishers. Some of the curricula are so new that efficacy studies were not available, however, publishers submitted research-based evidence that supported the development of that new curriculum. On this slide and the next, you'll see the recommended curriculum, its costs, the resources included in the purchase, print, digital kit materials, and professional development to prepare and support our teachers with implementation. The cost listed is what SUSD will pay this fiscal year, and all contracts will cover seven years of access. We thought it'd be helpful to see how the cost relates to a per-pupil expenditure. It's important to make note of any ongoing costs with adopting these materials. First, with increases in student enrollments, additional purchases of textbooks and online licenses may need to occur. And as always with science courses, science courses are so special, there's our activity and lab materials that need to be purchased and replenished at sites every year. For our K-8 classrooms, materials are purchased, housed, and distributed efficiently to schools out of our Science Resource Center at the warehouse. Our K-8 teachers have everything they need to execute their science curriculum. Historically, the high schools purchase materials autonomously with varying funding sources and budgets between the schools. To support Strategic Plan 5.3, ensure equitable distribution of resources to meet the needs of our students, we are supporting a more centralized, cost-effective system for ordering and distributed consumable materials for curriculum-aligned labs and investigations for high school courses included in this adoption. Here's a second slide that outlines the costs of this adoption and includes information for AP Physics and middle school. Rolling out a new curriculum requires careful planning and execution to ensure its success. A few important components of the process include teacher training, collaboration, resource allocation, ongoing support, and program evaluation. Teacher training and collaboration will begin the week after school is out as part of SUSD's 2023 Summer Institute, and will continue in August with professional development from experts from the publishers. Teacher training ensures that educators are equipped with the necessary skills and knowledge to effectively implement the new curriculum. The training and collaboration will continue to occur throughout the school year as we bring teachers together to refine curriculum maps, shape common assessments, define student success criteria, and work together to support successes and speed bumps. Additionally, there will be on-campus coaching support for teachers, administrators, and department heads to buttress implementation fidelity. Resource allocation involves providing teachers and students with the necessary tools, equipment, and materials to support the curriculum. All materials will arrive before the end of the fiscal year and distributed to sites either before or when teachers return in August. Throughout the year, we will continue to monitor and the rollout through feedback from teachers and data analysis. We can collect data surrounding student performance on benchmark, classroom, and state assessments, classroom walkthroughs, course enrollment numbers, grade distributions in courses, professional development surveys, and others. Overall, the key to monitoring the efficacy of a new curriculum is to use a variety of methods to gather data and feedback and respond to that evidence accordingly, ultimately ensuring our students demonstrate successful academic performance. And at this time, Dr. Daws and I would like to field your questions.
Governing Board members, questions for these leaders? Dr. Hartwells, do you have any questions or comments?
Of course I do. Thank you for President Sanowski. Thank you, Dr. Daws, Karen, and Ms. Kaiser. You know I have a particular interest in this particular adoption. So unsurprisingly, a couple of questions. How, when you showed us the rubrics and the alignment with the standards and the next-gen science standards, that all makes sense. So how operationally would you describe you ensured objective thinking was consistently embedded in the recommendations that you brought forward?
Thank you, Dr. Hartwells. Something that I observed, I was present for each of the committee meetings, I was not part of the evaluation team, but objectively, I would tell you that the way that the group worked, and we can even go to a picture at the beginning, the different content groups worked together in small-table groups where they were utilizing their rubric and going through page by page or link by link within the digital curriculum. And when doing so, they would look at the material, they would look at the rubric, and they would actually have conversations. And that was something that I think is highlighted in the feedback that Johanna received in the quotes because there were different perspectives, teacher perspective, parent perspective, but then specifically the look at the rubric as well. I think too what was valuable with the rubric that the committee finally decided on creating, as Johanna mentioned, at the very beginning, there were certain criteria that the curriculum had to have met in order for that curriculum to warrant more continued review. And I think that really took away, "I loved this class when I was in high school," or, "Oh, gosh, that was the bane of my existence," or, as we've talked about truthfully, and we've had concerns about math readiness. And so that all went away when it went to looking at the rubric, looking at the material, and then making sense together as small groups.
And I'd like to add to that as well. It's hard to pick curriculum. You get emotionally attached to things, but using the rubric, and something that arose early on was ensuring that scientific accuracy was at the forefront of looking at the materials. In fact, in the EQUIP rubric, scientific accuracy falls in a later category than that first one, and it was proposed by our committee members to put scientific accuracy at the forefront. And so no matter how glitzy or glammy a curriculum may look or might tug at something, we really had to look like, does it meet the Arizona Standards, does it meet our objectives, and is the curriculum scientifically accurate?
Excellent. That's what I was looking for. Thank you. You mentioned a little bit, Ms. Kaiser, a little bit different funding and operational centralization going forward for resources for the schools in terms of deploying the curriculum, and in particular, the labs, right? That's what you said, the consumables, the refillables. How does that, can you just tell me a little bit more about how that you see that rolling out? Because, and where I'm coming from here, the lens I'm looking at, looking through is just to ensure that the deployment doesn't become a rate-limiting step, because we can have this fantastic curriculum, but if not consistently and rigorously deployed, then we, you know, the students and the community just doesn't gain the full benefit. So could you just drill down a little bit more and say a little bit more how you see that centralization rolling out operationally?
Yes, and I thank you for highlighting that because that was really something very important to our committee members, and we heard loud and clear, particularly from our high school, that some people didn't have what they need to execute the curriculum, and they didn't have the materials. And that ends right now this year. It is critical that every student sitting in every seat in Chemistry 1 has the same experience and access to the materials and labs and activities as somebody else. The curriculum, I'm going to highlight Chemistry specifically. That curriculum includes in it over 90 investigations. Now, there's only 180 school days, so 90 investigation isn't, are not feasible. They do recommend 30 essential labs, and then there are performance tasks. We purchased the materials, the consumable materials, to execute those 30 labs for every teacher, and will have all those ready on day one. And then we chose not to continue purchasing the whole entire lab replenishment kits because it was not cost-effective. And listen, I'm a taxpayer here, living in Scottsdale, and I want to make sure that our money is used correctly because we know we can purchase those consumable materials and replenish as a as-needed basis by teachers. So what we do in middle school is after a unit or after the year, the teachers have a list of their consumables and what's needed for a single class. They submit that list through our resource center, and we're able to purchase in bulk and then distribute to classes effectively. And so rather than purchasing these expensive replenishment kits that just show up at doors, we're going to be doing that and making sure that every teacher has what they need, which will be new for middle, for high school this year, and the high school teachers are very excited about that. They're nodding their heads because they know they're going to have what they need. And so that, I think I...
And Dr. Hartwells and the rest of the board, I think something to add is that Johanna and I, when talking about this, is we really want to benchmark off of the success we've seen in our elementary schools and with our middle school kits. The Science Resource Center, if you've never gone, you should come check it out. It's a well-oiled machine. And what we can actually do by running it through our Science Resource Center is ensure that the kits are going out to campuses and that teachers have them available so that the students can engage. And the teachers, who also in the quotes said, as they started to dabble a little bit, "They're so excited about what awaits them," we can monitor that a lot better when it's running through our Science Resource Center. And Johanna, as she stated earlier, is very organized, and the way that she works with our Science Resource Center team really has a plan in place to ensure, Dr. Hartwells, that very timely delivery of materials for our campuses. But also to be noted, there are some chemicals, for example, that will be actually at the school and not transported in a van from the warehouse to a campus. We have appropriate storage on our campuses for our chemicals.
Thank you very much. That was a...
Dr. Hartwells, do you have any more? You sound like you do. Okay, keep going.
I do. I wanted just a last comment, but thank you for the response, and you clearly thought this through, and I appreciate it very much. It's very exciting, very excited for our students and our whole community, but I want to just end with a very hearty thank you to the teachers who sat on the committee and gave their expertise and their time, the parents and the community members and their perspective, and to the teaching and learning administration for their leadership in this kind of, this process was no small lift, and you did it with gusto, and it shows. The testimonials that you shared, I loved them, and I think it shared a sense of collaboration and respect that clearly shone through this whole process. You moved a mountain in a short amount of time, all of you, and all of that kind of wrapped up in community. And so that came through, and I appreciate that very much, all of your times. Thank you, and we'll look forward to your second read.
Thank you, Dr. Hartwells. I have one quick question. These materials are hands-on materials, correct?
When we talk about materials, it depends on, it depends on the product. So every single product has online resources, but...
Answered my question.
Right, but also, you know, I just shout out to what the teachers and being fiscally responsible for. So our hardbound textbooks, our teachers elected to have a classroom set of hardbound textbooks, and students then, and then have a number at each site where students can check out if they wish to have a hardbound textbook, or if need be, based on their IEP or 504, they have access to a hardbound textbook. But all students will have access to all those materials online as well, and I'm telling you, that saved us millions of dollars by not purchasing a single textbook for every kid that will sit on a shelf dusty at home. So there'll be a classroom set, and then students can check out ones. Some of our materials do have consumable books, that's new for some of them, that's included in the costs every year. And then, of course, there are printed teacher editions and online teacher editions. And then for some courses, not our AP Physics courses, but for our middle school courses, for our chemistry and for our chemistry and, sorry, one more. For our chemistry, yeah, excuse me, just to look at my notes really quickly, I want to be accurate with what's provided. They, we are, we did include those first rounds of class sets of the hands-on materials to execute the labs. For our physics, we have a list of very manageable materials that we will be purchasing and sending out to schools, and as well as for our biology. They didn't come with complete kits. You can see why chemistry would need a little bit more than some of our other topics.
Excellent, and thank you also. I concur with that appreciation for that. So we'll look forward to getting that May 16th, right, the second read? Awesome. Good. Thanks. We are going to move on to Coronado Learning Community Strategic Planning Update, and I believe Dr. Benson is going to lead that conversation.
Appreciate the help with our technology team. Thank you very much. Good evening, President Sanowski, Vice President Werner, governing board members, Dr. Menzel, Gladys and Jennifer, and all here with us this evening. I'm happy to have the opportunity to... I'm happy to have the opportunity to set the stage for this Coronado Learning Community Strategic Planning Update. As many of you are aware, in keeping with district strategic planning efforts during the 2021-22 year, district and site leaders from the CLC embarked on a journey to engage the Coronado Learning Community in reconfiguring pre-K pathways and establishing new school boundaries within the learning community. That work set the stage for further strategic planning specific to the Coronado Learning Community this year. Tonight, it's my honor to welcome our principals of the Coronado Learning Community to collaboratively share highlights of our progress and outcomes so far for this year. They'll also share next steps we've identified to continue our strategic planning efforts specific to the learning community. Prior to turning it over to our principals, I did want to mention there are multiple lists that we look at for our celebrations. And while we prioritized and celebrated our principals the month of October for National Principals Month, on some social media sites, there was a celebration of National Principals Day. So shout out to all of our principals yesterday and to our Coronado principals who gave part of their day to practice for this presentation. So shout out to all, and I'd like to welcome my colleagues up. Before I turn it over to our principals, wanted to pause and publicly thank Dr. Connie Cam, who's with us this evening, for her support as her facilitation provided the foundation for much of the highlights and experiences you'll hear about this evening. Thank you, Connie. Also wanted to pause and recognize Dr. Sakos and Ms. Serna for their commitment, their partnership, and their leadership in this work as well. First up is Dr. Praninski, who will provide important details of the phases of our Coronado Learning Community strategic planning work. Welcome, Dr. Praninski. Make sure it's going to go.
Maybe.
Try and advance the slide. Can we advance the slide? What if we click? Nope.
Here we go.
There we go. Now we're just going to have some delay. There we go.
Good evening. Our Coronado Learning Community roadmap seen here reflects our journey over the past several years. Starting in the spring of 2021, we started by hosting town hall events at each of our schools to give feedback on next steps for our Coronado Learning Community. Town halls were held at each of our schools to explore both the strengths and the opportunities within our learning community. At this time, Yavapai and Ho-Hokam were merged. We also met at Pima Elementary, Tonalea K-8, and Coronado High School. A common theme that surfaced from our town halls centered on both enrollment and our matriculation patterns. Specifically, as our Tonalea K-8 building was nearing physical capacity and limited the number of eighth graders we could enroll who would eventually feed into Coronado High School. To this end, the board approved to create a better pipeline by returning Tonalea K-8 to a standalone middle school and reestablishing Yavapai, Ho-Hokam, and Pima as our feeders into Tonalea Middle School. This was Phase 1. Phase 2 allowed building principals to work closely with district administration and district transportation, also with our SIMAR team to reimagine what our new boundaries would look like for a new elementary configuration. Boundaries were approved by our board last spring, and we reopened our schools this fall under our current configuration. In addition, our communication team led an amazing effort to market our new school configuration. Phase 3 work started this year and has been carried out by a team to include all of our Coronado Learning Community principals, our teachers, cabinet members, and Dr. Connie Cam. To get more information on Phase 3, I will now turn it over to Dr. Jay.
Good evening. This year, we have been actively engaged in Phase 3 of our targeted strategic planning for the Coronado Learning Community. Under the facilitation of Dr. Connie Cam, the team met 13 times this year to envision, shape, and implement a future-focused direction for the learning, leading, and teaching of the Coronado Learning Community. This team included the complex principals, district leaders, Dr. Benson, Ms. Serna, and Dr. Sakos; community members Nan Stroemeyer from the SUSD Foundation and Dennis Robbins from the Scottsdale Charos. In addition to these members, Marjorie Sekiros, a kindergarten teacher at Ho-Hokam, and Melinda Splitick, the Assistant Principal of Educational Services from Coronado, attended every meeting to provide additional voice and context to our work. During our targeted strategic planning, we were able to engage each of our school communities in gathering feedback that would inform our work. I would like to introduce Mr. Hodo, who will speak to you about the profile of our future learner and leader.
Good evening. During our Coronado Learning Community collaboration meetings, we studied transversal competencies. Transversal competencies are skills that businesses, companies, and futurists believe are needed for the world of tomorrow. Because the world is rapidly changing at unprecedented rates, we acknowledge that we cannot prepare our scholars for yesterdays or even today's world. We must prepare our scholars for the world of tomorrow. As a learning community, we intensely study these transversal competencies and agreed upon the skills we will focus on at our schools. Many of these skills are already in place at our school. The transversal competencies that we decided on are innovative, resilient, collaborative, globally aware, ethical, and empathetic. To be prepared for the future of our... To be prepared for the future, our scholars must be creative, embrace a can-do, growth mindset attitude, understand how to work with other people, understand and value diverse perspectives, be a person of integrity, and a person of compassion and understanding. This profile of a learning segues into how we orchestrated a promotional video for our learning community. Mr. Chuck Montalo will now discuss the process of how this video came about.
Following the creation of the CLC profile of a learner and leader, we worked collaboratively, both within the CLC Strategic Action Team and with site leadership teams on our campuses, to create storyboards and scripts that illustrate the skills and dispositions of the profile within the CLC schools. During two action-packed days of filming at our five schools, Real Clutch Media captured our storyboards and scripts and then worked through Production Magic, creating the short video that brings the CLC profile of a learner and leader to life. We're going to watch that now. And then Principal Palatucci is going to talk about next steps for the CLC learning community.
Keep our dear...
Keep our dear...
Learning community...
Learning community...
Happy...
Happy...
The Coronado Learning Community is one of the five communities in the Scottsdale Unified School District. We have Pima Elementary, Ho-Hokam Elementary, Yavapai Elementary, Tonalea Middle School, and Coronado High School.
The secret of our success here in the Coronado Learning Community is this learner and leader profile. We prepare future leaders who are innovative, collaborative, ethical, resilient, globally aware, and empathetic.
But these characteristics are what our students need to be successful in the future.
So it's important for Coronado Learning Community students to develop a sense of innovation so that they can prepare themselves for college and career and for their futures.
The kids are always asking, "How does this apply in real life?" And the virtual reality lets us actually do that. And hopefully, it's stoking that fire again then to go and be our future.
I like STEM because it's fun and you learn about future jobs, and we do a lot of hands-on projects that are fun.
I have my students do a lot of collaborative projects. It's important to give them the hands-on opportunity and to work in a collaborative way with their teammates. When students are engaged, that leads to deeper levels of learning.
Golden tray! Golden tray! Golden tray!
We love to recognize those students who demonstrate personal responsibility by giving them the Golden Tray Award.
To know that they're going to get an award for being good helps them try their very best.
In pals, we play with the little kids and teach them safety, ownership, and respect. Right now, we're playing flag tag, and we're showing them that pulling a flag, we cannot be too rough, and we should be safe at all times.
We have grit.
We have grit.
And we don't quit.
And we don't quit.
In robotics, they try out different ideas. If one idea doesn't work, they come back with another idea and keep trying.
The first draft isn't their final one. There's always room for improvement.
Cultivating resilience is important for our students because life can be tough at times, and we need to push through.
One thing that motivates us is our slogan, "Don't stop until you're proud."
In the Coronado Learning Community, we offer a world-class education. And that means we have to make our kids globally aware.
It's important to me that my class displays the characteristics of being globally aware. We are not only examining the voices that are present in the texts that we're reading, but we're also examining the voices that aren't.
It was definitely a more stricter and harder environment, which caused a lot of economical issues.
Is empathetic and tries to understand things from the other person's point of view.
What does it mean to pick up on someone else's feelings?
To kind of support them and not really try to end the competition?
You have to listen because that's the main part.
Our dawn challenges make a sense of community throughout the school, and that creates more of a culture of respect throughout the campus.
We know that kids will go on too many facets of life, and we want them to be prepared.
The Coronado Learning Community Flag Ceremony happens once a month. And one of the great things about our flag ceremony is we also bring in our community to celebrate those successes in each school.
Collaboration with our parents is a critical component to our success here in this community. We're keeping that community focus in mind, what this community is all about. We have, you know, second, third, fourth generation students in our schools right now.
So the Coronado Promise is a collaborative effort between our community members. They have worked together to ensure there are scholarships and fundings for students' post-secondary endeavors.
We are shaping the leaders of tomorrow. These kids, our kids, are going to change the world.
I am a first-generation high school student. My parents did not make it past middle school, so I know that when they see me walking across that stage, it will make them feel feelings that words can't express.
Makes special for me because most of the parents here right now have been tested since I was in elementary.
This is a school I always wanted to come to since I was going to Yavapai, Tonalea, back in the kindergarten, first grade. And, you know, finally getting to move my tassel from left to right in the middle.
It's a pride and honor to remember your boots and always remember that there are no limitations, no matter what.
Before Principal Palatucci resumes and talks about next steps, did want to thank our technology team for the work that they've done to install the new technology equipment. This is day one. The video, while it has a little bit of a gap between that which we saw streamed and the audio, it is correct on the website when you see it. So it's just the new technology equipment. And I wanted to make sure that we knew, persons knew that it's a high-quality video that's posted on our website. Thank you.
Thank you. It is really a wonderful video. I'm really glad we got to show that because I even get teary-eyed every time I see it. I see all my dawns and my future dawns and just all the amazing things that are going on. I wish we could push that out to the world. I just want to share it with everybody because I'm just so proud of our community. All right. So I am excited to share information with you all regarding the next steps. For Coronado High School, we are designing our diploma advantage pathways. This means, in addition to their high school diploma, Coronado students will graduate with at least one other distinction. Some of these diploma advantage options include CTE certifications, fine art seals, Seal of Bile literacy, and specialty program distinctions such as JAG, and opportunities to earn college credit through dual enrollment classes. We are committed to increasing students' exposure to college options. We will continue to add more dual enrollment course offerings, which will empower our students to work towards their associate degree while they are in high school. The goal will be to increase the number of students who graduate with their associate's degree at the same time as their high school diploma. We will also continue to promote the Coronado Promise Program, which ensures funding for our students after graduation. As a Coronado Learning Community, we have been collaborating on ways to build capacity. Our areas of focus will be personalized learning, problem-based learning, formative assessments, and an increased time for teachers to have additional collaboration time. We are fortunate to collaborate with our feeder schools in the Coronado Learning Community, such as Pima. We are excited to partner with educators in order to prepare our future dawns for success in elementary, middle, high school, and beyond. You will hear from Pima a little later this evening regarding reshaping their educational focus. Thank you all.
And with that, Governing Board members, do you have any questions or comments for this team of leaders? I'll make a comment. Thank you. Thank you all for not just leading your campuses, but leading in our community. Appreciate the work, recognize it, and yay, keep going. Guess that's it. We're going to move on to our...
President Sanowski?
Yes, Dr. Hartwells? Sorry.
It's okay. May I make a comment, please?
Please do.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say I had an opportunity to finally see the video. I can't see it through the teams here, but I was finally able to see the video. I was sitting on a tarmac, plane delay. And I wanted to share this because I hope all the principals are there. I believe all of you did speak this evening. And I was left with this sense, after watching that video, that it took me a while to figure out why I felt the way I felt when I watched the video. And I shared with Dr. Menzel afterwards. I can figure it out. And what it was, it was the heart that's in the video. It's exceptionally moving. And I believe that that was shining through from all of the administrators who spoke in that video, of course, the children, the teachers. But I want to pat all of you on the back virtually, that the principals in the Coronado Learning Community, every one of you, your heart came through in that video. And I think that that video is a foreshadowing of what's to come for the Coronado Learning Community, that the future is bright as it should be. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Hartwells.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. And we are going to now move on to 11E, which is a proposal for consideration to the 2024 ASBA agenda. All Governing Board members did receive an email April 26 from the Arizona School Board Association with an overview of providing input and priorities for the direction of ASBA. In the past, this has been our meeting to have a discussion and bring forward ideas. And then we, because this is a discussion item, we are not making any decisions on this tonight, but it will be, it'll come back for approval. And your input at the next meeting on May 16. And you all received the deadline, or the timeline, I should say, of this process overall throughout our state of Arizona. That it's, the proposed items are due May 24. That's why the May 16 meeting is really important. Legislative Committee meets, the ASBA Legislative Committee meets on Friday, June 2. And then the September 9 Delegate Assembly for ASBA is when, and that's at the Law Conference, that's when voting will take place on recommendations. Are there any questions at this time? Or would anyone like to make proposals for additions so that our Scottsdale interests are included in this state organization? If, Dr. Hartwells, do you have any?
No, I do not.
Okay. I'm just going to say this, if anyone has ideas, please forward them to me by Friday. Let's say by Monday of next week because that will give us some time still to consider them into our agenda for our next board meeting. Okay? All right. We are going to move on to our action items. 12A Personnel Action Items for April 24 through May 2, 2023. Ms. Wilson, she's got some great proposals tonight.
President Sanowski, members of the Governing Board, and Dr. Menzel, yes, we are pleased to present to you...
are pleased to present to you Personnel Action Items from April 19th through today. Most notably, we have two recommendations on here. One for the Director of Federal and State Programs, Dr. David Proninski, who you just heard from and saw in the video, to be the new Director of Federal and State Programs. And additionally, behind me, Mr. Paul Ferrero, to become the new Principal of Mojave Middle School. There are additional items on there as well for your approval of new hires and also some resignations from various members. So very pleased to make these recommendations. A great process for those two administrators, and very, very pleased to make these recommendations to these future leaders for district administration and for our middle school.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. At this time, do any governing board members have questions or comments for Ms. Wilson on these recommendations? Dr. Hartwells, do you?
No, I do not.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve the Personnel Actions. You said the 19th. Is that correct? I showed the 24th.
So I would sense the last governing board meeting, some of the items on here...
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're clear on that.
Thank you.
So the Personnel Action Items, let's put it that way, presented to us this evening. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Board Member Carney seconds that motion. All in favor to approve the Personnel Action Items, say aye.
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 That motion passes 5-0. Congratulations, gentlemen. Dr. Menzel would like to make some comments at this time.
I just want to add my congratulations to Paul Ferrero, who not only is an SUSD legacy, but he's also a Boomerang employee. And we'll give you the Boomerang pin, but thank you for wearing your legacy pin tonight. We appreciate that. And Dr. Proninski is also an SUSD legacy, so it's really wonderful to celebrate people who come up to our system.
Thank you, Dr. Menzel. Congratulations, gentlemen. Oh, that's sweet. All right. We're going to move on to our Action Item 12B, Pima Traditional School Name and Education Focus Change. And I believe Margaret Serna and Principal Hoda are going to present this.
Congratulations, Dr. Proninski, and congratulations, Principal Ferrero. Good evening, Board President Sanowski, Board Vice President Warner, members of the Board, Dr. Menzel, Mrs. Wagner, and Mrs. McClellan. As the Executive Director of Elementary Schools for Scottsdale Unified School District, it is my honor to present Pima Principal Chris Hoda, as he will give you a brief presentation regarding the reimagining of Pima's educational focus. It is a process that started over two years ago that has involved input from all stakeholders and has brought us to where we are here tonight with this presentation. Thank you. Chris?
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Sanowski, Board Vice President Warner, members of the Board, Dr. Menzel, Mrs. Wagner. Thank you for allowing me to present Pima's journey to rethink the educational focus of our school. In the year 2020, my first year as Pima's principal was during COVID. Because of all the modifications that were made to adapt to the pandemic, it was difficult to get a clear picture of the traditional model. When I would ask teachers, parents, and district personnel about Pima's traditional model, I was told that Pima was traditional with a twist. There were different definitions of what that twist was, and I wanted to ensure we were consistently following a framework with fidelity. So I began asking my direct supervisor questions to figure out what the traditional model should look like at Pima. During the next school year, 2021, I was able to get a clear picture of Pima. Some inconsistencies did not fit the traditional model. This caused me to have continued discussions with my direct supervisor. In November of 2021, with my supervisor's permission, I gave out a questionnaire to my staff, asking if they wanted to continue with the traditional model. Reviewing the results of the survey, my staff was 50-50. Half the staff wanted to remain traditional, and half the staff wanted to move on from traditional. In January of 2022, I met with my supervisor to develop a questionnaire that I would send out to parents and community members. After getting these results, we found out that our parents and community were also split 50-50. In February of 2022, my supervisor and I met with our staff to discuss the results of the staff and parent-community questionnaires. Based on how my staff responded in the meeting, it was evident that the staff wanted a clear direction for Pima's educational approach. In March 2022, the Coronado Learning Community Principals and district leaders began meeting to discuss the trajectory of the Coronado complex. It was at this time that we began reshaping the CLC complex. We started meeting with our community and staff members, and we decided to reopen Yavapai and have Tanalia become a dedicated middle school. We also started collaborating on the educational focus of Pima. In September of 2022, I met with my new supervisor, Ms. Serna, on the progress Pima made to determine the school's educational focus, and we decided to set a meeting with Pima's leadership team to discuss the possible rebranding of Pima. My leadership team was receptive to the idea. In December of 2022, we established a committee led by me, consisting of my assistant principal, Mrs. Allen, Ms. Serna, my leadership team, and consultant Dr. Connie Cam of Cam Solutions. As the principal, I wanted to ensure that we heard the voices of all stakeholders. The committee outlined a plan to determine how we would reach out to the staff, our parents and community, and our scholars. In February of 2023, we had a professional workshop that we presented to our teachers, staff, parents, community, and scholars to discuss the future of education and if the traditional model would best prepare our scholars for tomorrow's world. After the professional workshop, participants were asked if they wanted to continue with the traditional model. Eighty-four percent of the staff and teachers did not want to continue with the traditional model, and 62% of the parents that responded did not want to continue with the traditional model. Our scholars stated that they love Pima because the teachers make learning fun and engaging. Overwhelmingly, I heard from parents and community members that they love what we are doing at Pima because their children feel safe, loved, valued, and their children are receiving a solid education. After dissecting these results, I invited my leadership team, Ms. Serna, Dr. Cam, parents and community members, to discuss the results and collaborate on the next steps. After this meeting, it was determined by all stakeholders that we wanted to recommend to the Board that Pima should no longer be a traditional school and that we should change the name to Pima Elementary School. To ensure that we are prepared for the changes, our staff will receive the professional development necessary to equip for the upcoming school year. Today, our K-3 teachers receive Core Knowledge Language Arts, or CKLA, training. And on May 10th, our teachers will receive Big Ideas training. On June 8th, 9th, and 13th, we will have a summer workshop with Ms. Serna to develop project-based and problem-based learning projects and assignments that will align with our curriculum. Beginning in the 2023-2024 school year, our K-3 teachers will begin using CKLA, while the 4th and 5th grade teachers will continue with Units of Study. Once the ELA Adoption Committee decides on a newly adopted curriculum, we will begin using that curriculum. We have two members of Pima on the ELA Adoption Committee, and I am one of those members. We have six Pima teachers and me that are dyslexia-trained. Also, in the 2023-2024 school year, we'll begin using Big Ideas for math. We have given every grade level a sample of the Big Ideas curriculum, and we have a rotational day of training to support teachers with the new curriculum. Pima is a great school because we have supportive parents and community, five-star teachers and staff, and excellent scholars. What makes Pima great is the model and vision that we live and breathe every day. I am proud. I'm inspired. I am motivated. I will achieve. I am Pima. Pima has a strong legacy of pride. Through this journey of finding our educational focus, it is quite evident that Pima is destined for prominence, and I am purposed to provide the leadership, longevity, and support to take our school to the next level. I want to thank the Pima Learning Community, Assistant Principal Mrs. Allen, Dr. Cam, and Ms. Serna for standing alongside Pima in our journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Hoda. Do governing board members, do you have some questions or comments you'd like to share at this time? Board Member Carney?
Thank you so much for that presentation. So my question is, tonight, are we just voting on a name change?
The proposal before us is to do a name change and educational focus change.
Is that correct?
An educational focus change?
That's correct.
Okay.
From traditional to what Mr. Hoda had already, has already described.
Right. So I've just heard from some community members and parents who are nervous about making this change from their traditional model. And I think that the data you gathered kind of shows that, right, it's split. And I just want to confirm that what we received, that you only had feedback from eight parents on this, or community members?
Yeah, we had, I believe it was 13 families that we had.
Thirteen families?
Yes.
Okay.
I reached out to all the families in our community and invited them to be a part of this process.
Okay. And that was done by email, or how did you?
Email and text.
Email and text, okay. And only 13 families showed up?
Well, there's a lot of trust in our community. Our families trust me, and they trust the things that we're doing.
That's good. I was a Pima parent myself. My 16-year-old was at Pima, so I know. I love my time at Pima. Lastly, when you, on the presentation, you said, so June 8th, there was three dates in June?
June 8th, 9th, and 13th.
That parents and stakeholders can be involved again. Is this going to be an opportunity for everyone to come and learn again about the focus of where Pima is headed?
This is going to be an opportunity to develop our curriculum further, and we're going to be meeting with Ms. Serna to help guide us through that process.
Okay. Is that opening the back up to everyone, or is this going to be a committee for those dates?
This is just the committee with, like, teachers and staff members and administration.
Okay. Because I thought I saw in there that community members were going to be involved and parents. So how...
This is more like professional development and training.
Okay, for those dates?
Yes.
So how will you be involving the community in this transition moving forward?
Well, I'll invite them to come, especially when we have our opening night coming back. We'll have a lot of information and details. And that's when a majority of our parents like to come, that meet-the-teacher night, especially, is when we have a great turnout. We also have our Title I events that happen throughout the year. We have tremendous turnout through those events as well, and that'd be a great opportunity to also inform parents about our changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Dr. Hartwells?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Principal Hoda. I don't know if you recall, but when Board Presidents Sanowski and I first joined the Board, we visited Pima kind of early into this analysis you were doing. And when we sat down, you mentioned to us, you shared with us at the question of, you know, how do you see, you know, making changes at Pima? How do you see things moving forward, your goals? And you identified just what you have done, which was that you were not entirely convinced that the traditional model fit the community at Pima and the needs. So I applaud your doggedness in staying with this analysis over the course of several months, and all, of course, those that were supporting that analysis. But I just wanted to pat you on the back for your persistence. Oftentimes, change is, it is slow-moving, but you need a champion to lead it. And it seems like you definitely are that person. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words.
Thank you, Dr. Hartwells. Dr. Menzel?
Thank you, President Sanowski. Thank you, Mr. Hoda, and all the team that have worked on this. I think there are a couple of things that are important to, important to point out. When you said Pima was traditional with a twist, I'm not sure that everyone understands what the traditional model is and how it differs from some of the other educational programs we have in the district. And so some characteristics of a traditional school like Cheyenne, students are wearing uniforms, direct instruction most of the time, Spalding for their language arts curriculum, Saxon for math. Those are hallmark characteristics of a traditional program. Pima didn't have uniforms. It had Spalding and Saxon. The level of fidelity of implementation probably wasn't as consistent as you would have seen in Cheyenne. So there was an attempt to do the traditional model in Pima, but the Pima traditional with a twist had some of those variables in it. I've seen some things online that I want to make sure people understand with respect to the math curriculum for traditional programming. The Saxon math program is no longer being supported by the publisher, so all traditional programs are looking at a different math curriculum. It's not that Scottsdale Unified School District has decided to jettison that and do something different. When you spoke tonight about the curriculum options and the transition, you have sort of a hybrid approach using CKLA, which is already the district-adopted ELA curriculum in K-3. You'll maintain Spalding for 4 or 5 until the K-5 ELA adoption happens. Just make sure that I heard that correctly. Units of Studies, what 4th and 5th do? Units of Study? Correct. And then, then the, the Big Ideas math curriculum is the district-adopted math curriculum. So would it be fair to say that in Pima, you have and hold high expectations for academic achievement for your students in this new model you're proposing?
Yes, we will always have high expectations for our scholars. That's why we even call them scholars, because we have very high expectations.
I'm going to throw one at you. Have you found any signs on your campus that says "Pima Rocks"? Some of you that are laughing know what I'm talking about because Pima has struggled, I think, with getting pulled into being something different than what you're embracing it to be, and that is a neighborhood public school. So, you know, I appreciate the community for embracing what they want to be and you being courageous to move them forward. Just putting that out there.
Thank you very much.
And that was actually my first school at teaching in Scottsdale schools, was Pima. So great place to learn for any student, so, and great place to teach. I enjoyed it. All right. Seeing that there are no more questions or comments for Mr. Hoda, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Pima Traditional School Name and Education Focus Change. Is there a second on that motion? Second. Seconded by Board Member Lindsey. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 That motion passes 5-0. Thank you. And we are going to move on now to the second read and approval of governing board policy BEDF regarding voting method. And Counsel McLennan is going to lead us through that process.
Madam President, members of the governing board, Dr. Menzel, Ms. Wagner, I believe I need the IT department to pull up the relevant policies, as I do not appear to have a working computer. There we go. So we have two versions that have been presented to the governing board this evening. Board President Sanowski has requested this agenda item, and she provided some additional proposed revisions that are up on the screen right now. And then we also received a proposed revision from Board Member Vice President Warner. And I've provided copies of both versions to the governing board members tonight in hard copy, as well as to Dr. Hartwells by email. So I don't know, Jonathan, if you can put them side by side, if you can pull up the other version? Maybe too small, but... Thank you.
Vice President Warner, you said, had provided the addition since we last met?
Correct.
Okay.
She has, she has provided an alternative version.
Okay. Did you want to go, maybe it's easiest just to read it through in its entirety, and then we can ask questions or have questions on that. Jennifer, what are your thoughts on that?
That would seem to be reasonable. So I don't know, Ms. Warner, if you'd like to present your, your version first, or?
Sure.
Sure, that'd be great.
Were you going to read it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to read it.
Can I ask?
If you could, if you could. Thank you very much.
Are you going to read it, Vice President Warner?
All right. Hold on one moment.
The document's on the I R R board. I thought she had it.
I apologize. So the version that Ms. Warner has presented would state, the first paragraph, "Vots on all motions and resolutions shall be by ayes or nays. However, board members may also abstain from voting." And then the word "or abstentions" is stricken. There's no change to the second proposed paragraph. The third paragraph would read, "All motions shall be carried by a majority of the members who vote, or as otherwise required by law. When a quorum is present, a majority vote of the votes cast, ignoring abstentions, is sufficient for the adoption of any motion, except when abstentions are made for lack of sufficient information needed by the member to make an informed decision. In such case, if the motion does not have a majority vote of all of the members, including members abstaining, in its favor, then it shall not be adopted." So that's the version proposed by Ms. Warner. And then now I'm going to read the version proposed by Ms. Sanowski, unless you'd like to, Board President Sanowski?
Yeah, I'd like to read it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. "Vots on all motions and resolutions shall be ayes or nays. Board members may also abstain from voting. An abstention is not a vote and is to be used when a board member has an actual conflict of interest, as defined under state law or governing board policy. In accordance with Governing Board Policy BCB, if a board member has a conflict of interest and plans to abstain from voting on a measure, the board member shall not participate in the discussion on the proposed measure prior to the vote. At the discretion of the board..." That's nothing added there. So going down to the bottom, "All motions shall be carried by a majority of members who vote, or as otherwise required by law. When a quorum is present, a majority of, a majority vote of the votes cast, ignoring abstentions, is sufficient for the adoption of any motion."
And just to point out, the change from the first read in Board President Sanowski's version presented is the addition in the first paragraph after the strikeout of the word "abstentions." So that starts with, "An abstention is not a vote and is not to be used."
And then also to note, the cross-reference is addition of BCB policy. Governing Board members, do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make at this time?
Yeah.
Board Member Warner?
So the changes to the policy proposed at the last meeting, which is subsequently changed, I just noticed that, have the consequence of stripping members of their vote if they abstain from voting on a motion because they do not have sufficient information to make an informed decision, as now has been validated in the situation regarding 8E on March 21st. Sometimes we do need more information, because it just wasn't, wasn't provided. It also allows other members to force through a motion without a majority vote of all the board members. This eliminates all minority protections. Moving to table a matter does not provide a solution, because that can also fail. In the event a motion to table fails, then we're back to the situation where a member does not have sufficient information to make an informed decision, and the member, under the previously proposed policy, or really the proposed policy today... Sorry, I lost my spot here. So when a member does not have sufficient information to make an informed decision, and the member under the previous policy is then excluded from voting in the member, if the member abstains. Again, I would reference the 8E on March 21st. Sometimes we do need additional information. What I'm talking about today is a bona fide need for additional information. So as much as I appreciate the other board members' positions on this matter, in order to address our responsibility to make informed decisions and decisions that benefit our community, I promote amending the previously proposed policy as shown on the screen. I think it's on the right. "In respect to our strategic goals of inclusion and transparency, we were elected by the voters, and by stripping minority board member voters, you're stripping our voters and community members of their voices. We must offer, operate with reflection of effective democratic local government, and follow policy BCA," which was referenced earlier today by our association members as well. "Board members should honor and respect the principles and spirit of representative democracy, and set a positive example for good citizenship. We should also maintain public confidence in the governance of the district and in performance of the public trust. Ignoring abstentions breaks public trust. With the new proposed language in BDF, shown on the screen on the right, if a motion fails due to an abstention, it allows for the requested or necessary information to be provided, and then the item can be brought back on the addenda for a vote." So this is for bona fide request for more information, and that's why I propose to change changes that I did. Thank you.
Are there other comments that, Board Member Lindsey?
Would you like to weigh in on these proposed changes?
Madam President, members of the Governing Board, Mr. Lindsey. The Governing Board has discretion under 15321, or legal authority, to adopt its own rules of order. So as I mentioned last time, the, the proposed changes to the policy at the first read were based loosely on Robert's Rules of Order, so that abstentions would not affect the members of the majority who are present from passing an item, which follows Robert's rules. Members could still abstain, but their abstain would have no effect on the vote. These two changes definitely create a situation, both versions, create a situation in which the abstentions could have an effect on the vote. Ms., President Sanowski's version would state that an abstention cannot be used unless there is an actual conflict of interest. Vice President Warner's version would state that if a member would have to declare the reason for the conflict of interest, if it was related to not having enough information, and then that could not be used to, the vote would not pass if that was the reason. So if you want to go to a more condensed version, the original version as proposed in the first read would be the viewpoint of the board. If you support Ms. Warner's position and want to make sure that the minority voices are heard in terms of, if you feel like you don't have enough information, the vote doesn't pass, which is effectively a motion to table, then Ms. Warner's version would be the version that you would pursue. And if you'd like to consider Board President Sanowski's position, which is that board members should vote unless they have an actual conflict of interest, then version two, as presented in the second read today, would be the version that you would want to vote for.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I just want to make clear that my proposals are in no way, shape, or form meant to strip anyone from their vote. It's actually to encourage people to make a decision and vote, as we were elected to do. So I want to make that very clear, that an abstention is not a yes or a no vote for any type of proposal. It's a, "I'm going to pass." At least that's what I have felt it has been used, how it's been used in the past. And I think that clarifying this in a board revision policy not just helps this board, but future boards on the use of their votes. So it's not an attempt to strip anyone from their voice or their vote. It's actually meant to clarify what their, the significance of their votes, because an abstention is a pass. It's not a yes or a no on any decision. And these decisions come to us as a Governing Board, as recommendations from our employees who are professionals that we hire and ensure their success. So I see, unless there's some extenuating circumstances, that maybe one board member has information on, the others don't, that would come in to discussion, but we should be voting on the, and taking actions on the motions that are presented before us. So I believe that the appropriate use of a table is, when you're talking about rules of order, the table is meant to pause and have more discussion, receive more information if necessary. So there's already that provision provided for all Governing Board members when they make decisions. Additionally, Governing Board members can ask our staff members and our superintendent for additional information going into a board member, or a board meeting. And I do recognize that sometimes board members have different information. We don't all have the same information. What I'm referring to is, based on your experiences, based on your prior questions, based on lots of information that you may have going into this, this role, you may have a different experience. So you may not need as much remediation or additional information as someone else on a particular topic. And that is why our staff is available to answer our questions before any decisions are made. Are there any other comments on this issue? Board Member Kearney?
Thank you, President Sanowski. Ms. McLennan, can I ask you a question? If we had a conflict of interest, wouldn't we recuse ourselves? We wouldn't need to abstain? We would accuse ourselves from being?
If you have a conflict of interest, you, typically the vote that you would take on the dais is to abstain, and you don't participate in the conversation. So if you have an actual conflict of interest, which is a legally defined term, then you would abstain as a part of, which is not voting.
But I just struggle with President Sanowski's added language here, because we were elected to make informed votes. And if we don't have the information to make an informed vote, we absolutely should have the power to abstain from a decision, because we don't have the information. So I agree with Vice President Warner on this.
Board Member Lindsey, I see you have a request to speak.
Dr. Menzel, would you like to weigh in?
I would actually like to clarify a few things. That's why I'm looking at our board policy, BEDF. Item E references, motion to table is an order at any time. So thinking about your comments, Vice President Warner, about the tabling, I think it's a fair point that, that doesn't necessarily pass. And so that creates a different conversation if there's a disagreement at the table. So what I wondered, and this would be future policy consideration, is whether or not there's a way to, to accomplish both things, to address the proposed change in BEDF that makes it clear that votes are yeses or nos. I mean, those are our votes, and abstention's not a vote. And, and so I think there's a legitimate concern there that we're trying to address. I think there's a legitimate concern to say if, if there's a need for more information, and maybe not everyone sees it. So the example I'll give is at, at our last meeting on the GUPIMAC contract. That was tabled with a request for more information. But there was a specific ask by President Sanowski about, were there any negative implications for tabling it? So sometimes things are time-sensitive, sometimes they're not. And, and so for me, what I'm, what I'm processing in all of this is, how do we ensure that we've got policy that acknowledges we need to have the information so board members can make informed decisions? We need to be cognizant of time constraints. Some things require action more quickly than others. And, and to not allow, to the point that Vice President Warner made, this notion that you can just plow through a motion to table, just because you could get three votes. So how do we find that balance? That's what I've been thinking through in my mind, which is why I would probably go back to the first version of the, and I, and I do understand, an abstention that's other than a conflict of interest. Conflict of interest, that's required by policy and by law. That's, that's a, there's a higher threshold. But I remember abstentions where people said, "I wasn't here at the time, you know, so I don't feel comfortable voting." So I think the first version probably gets us to a place where that's covered, but I think that there still needs to be more work. And, and at the end of the day, we'll implement whatever the board decides.
So I was thinking along the same lines, if we could go to the first version, and then maybe review another policy to address bona fide concerns of something we need to be tabled. So it kind of meets both.
Dr. Hurt Wells, do you have anything to add to this conversation?
Yes, I do. Thank you. One, I think a clarification's in order, because there's been some misstatements, and I want to make it clear to the community that there are misstatements. This policy is not about minority voices or majority voices necessarily. The changes are directed to defining what abstention means, so that it does not have a dilatory impact on the governance of the district, which is what happened at the meeting that you're referring, that's been referred to, and catch the date, but back in March. So this is nothing to do about silencing anyone. If you choose not to vote, it is your choice not to vote. If you want to do it because you're not prepared to do it, to prepare to make a decision, that's your choice. It has nothing to do with anyone silencing you. You chose that yourself. There might be reasons to do it. Policy should be at a high level. It should not be microscopic. And I would agree with Board Member Lindsey. We go back to the first read proposal, the language. And if there's related issues that have arisen this evening that a majority of the board feels are meritorious to pursue, then let's do that at another date. I think we've lost focus here. There's a little bit of a, I don't know, kind of a dispute underlying here that is not specifically directed to the proposed amendment, and the purpose of the proposed amendment to policy BEDF. And the purpose is to keep the governance of the district moving.
Right.
So I would, I would share Board Member Lindsey's recommendation that what we approve, we vote on and approve, is the language from the first read.
Dr. Hurt Wells, are you making a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the language of policy BEDF from the first read.
I would second that motion. All in favor to approve that particular rendition of BEDF? Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion passes 3-2. At this time, we will move on to the approval of the 2023-24 Governing Board meetings calendar. Dr. Menzel?
Thank you, President Sanowski, members of the Governing Board. So every year, we, we take an opportunity to look at a proposed calendar for regular and special meetings. As I think the Governing Board members know, it's possible to have more meetings than what are listed on the posted calendar. Pursuant to Arizona statute, we are required to have one regular meeting a month during the months the school is in session. So historically, Scottsdale has not had a meeting in July, although that, when I first got here, we had two in the summer of 2020. We sort of had issues that needed to be addressed. So the proposed calendar surfaced as a result of internal conversations with, with my leadership team. There is a tremendous amount of work that goes into preparing for Governing Board meetings, whether they're special meetings or regular meetings. It takes a lot of time and effort to do all of the, the backup and supportive work for those meetings. And there was a request, could we go to one meeting a month? That would help us, so that we can focus on implementing the core work of the district. My response was, I didn't think it would be possible to go to one meeting a month for multiple reasons. One of those is that there are some statutory timelines that we would miss if we only had one meeting a month. And so what you have in front of you this evening is a hybrid approach, where we... is a hybrid approach where we have five less meetings on the proposed calendar than we have this year. There's still the opportunity, should there be a need for more immediate action by the governing board, to schedule special meetings. That would be focused. One of the other things that I've heard from people is that our meetings do run long. And so if we can find a way to streamline some of the processes. The third thing that we believe we can address that I've heard from governing board members is more advanced information being provided for review. And if you have fewer meetings, then you have a longer, reasonable expectation for being able to have that information further in advance of the meeting in which the governing board is going to be asked to make a decision. So for those reasons, we propose the calendar that's in front of you this evening.
Governing board members, comments or questions at this time on the topic? Seeing, oh, is that a request? Board Member Warner.
So it actually saddens me about that there's complaints about the work that goes into the board meeting. I understand it's a lot of work, but it's also part of everyone's jobs, just like it's our job to be here to do the work that a governing board does. And to shorten our meetings by five meetings a year is significant. And our meetings do run really long, and we have a lot of work to do. And we're not even getting to all the things that we need to do now with the amount of meetings we have. Secondly, we have not even been able to schedule a retreat because we cannot get five people there. Because when we're having to add a meeting, it's difficult to get five people to agree at a time that we can have a meeting. And so I found it interesting, though, because with, in reference to you saying that it's a lot of work that goes into it. So we're taking away five meetings, but we're adding seven meetings for the academy, which administrators will participate in. And I can only imagine the amount of work that's gone into creating the academy and then fulfilling it for the 40 applicants that get selected to participate in the program. And I did check in with the community. And the communities that I have spoken with, they are absolutely opposed to this. And they've actually found it appalling that we would take with our opportunity to watch these meetings and to shed light on what's going on in our district. So I'm absolutely opposed to shortening our meetings by five, which, by the way, you know, you would think that it'd be a good thing. But with the amount of work that we have to do, it really isn't.
Any other questions or comments? Board Member Kearney, thank you.
Thank you, President Sanowski. I just want to point out that we've been here two and a half hours tonight, right? Doing work and listening to important presentations. And this, according to this presented calendar, this meeting wouldn't be happening next school year. That's, this meeting, you know, wouldn't be happening. So we've got a lot of work to do. I have, now, I can't understand how we can cut meetings. One of the critical places for school boards to work to retain informed trust of the communities is the conduct of meetings. So why would we be cutting down on our public board meetings? And I'd like to know, has Scottsdale Unified ever done this?
Who was it questioned?
Dr. Menzel.
Okay.
I'm not aware of, and I haven't studied, the prior calendars before I got here. I don't know, Ms. Sanowski's been in the district a lot longer. I don't know how that's been structured.
Well, some of the special sessions actually used to be during the workday. So that totally out, that excluded employees and parents. So when, I know when I started, I recall Board Member Lindsey requesting that the meeting time change to include employees and parents. So we pushed the time off. I will just say this, that there's nothing that is keeping us from scheduling meetings, the same we have in place right now, if we need to meet. Mesa Public Schools, I know they do not meet twice a month, and their meetings are a fraction of the time. That doesn't make them less effective of a district. It actually, in my mind, makes them more efficient in their work. So, and Board Member Kearney, you mentioned that this meeting wouldn't take place? Well, because the way the calendar sits next year, there isn't a first Tuesday until the 7th of May, and school would be out on the 23rd of May. So that would mean we would meet the 7th and the 21st, which is graduation week. So that probably wouldn't happen anyway, looking at the calendar, because I, as I understand, this was set up looking at those big key events. I will also note that we have added, and I believe Dr. Menzel and staff are committed to this, the town hall meetings, which actually brings issues of governance closer to the community by having town halls. So just something to think about. This isn't anyone's voice being eliminated or taken away. This is a calendar proposal, which is annual work of the board. Any other questions? Dr. Hartwells, would you have, would you like to weigh in on it?
No, thank you. I have no comments. I have no problems with this.
Board Member Kearney.
I just want to point out that our strategic plan goal to culture and climate says that we are committed to develop and sustain trust-based environments throughout the district. So how is taking away five regularly scheduled meetings for next school year helping develop or sustain trust within our community?
Who is your question directed to?
Dr. Menzel.
So again, when we look at what the core work is, and even going back to what governing policy says, special meetings are supposed to be for specific purposes, you know, as they emerge over time. What has typically happened is that we have action items, just like you would on a regular meeting agenda. And so it's kind of morphed into this, well, if we can't get it done on that meeting, we'll do it on the next meeting. That wasn't really what the intent of a special meeting or a study session was. It was really designed to focus in on core issues. So we have the ability through the calendar that we propose to, on those meetings where we have the second meeting in the month, not the regular meeting, the regular meetings where we conduct the business, where we approve the action items and take care of those items. In those other meetings, we can spend more time going deeper into the ways in which we're addressing the strategic plan, the specific commitments and the work of our strategic action teams, and how we're making progress there. We can highlight new and emerging programs and successful initiatives. But do I think we need to do that every month? I don't, I don't believe we do. If we feel like we need that every month, we can add those other meetings. But keep the purpose of the regular meeting to do the core business of the district, have those special or study sessions designed for focusing and diving more deeply into the core work of our strategic plan. And then if there's business that needs to take place in between those meetings, because sometimes that happens, schedule the special meeting for that specific item. That's not really hard to do, and it doesn't take three hours. It's, we have an item that needs to be addressed. We schedule it. It needs 24-hour notice to be properly posted, and we can move more quickly. So I don't see the calendar as taking away from being able to conduct the work of the district. I think it actually enhances and keeps us focused in a way that we've kind of drifted away from with the way the schedule is at the present time.
Thank you. Board Member Lindsey, you can go first. Order.
How much earlier can we get the info by switching to this one?
So when we, when we do it this way, we should be able to provide, and make sure I don't do my math the wrong way here, because we've been trying to get information the Thursday before. Sometimes it ends up Friday or Saturday before. We should be able to back that up to, by a week because we have more time to do that. If you're going to have an action agenda on one meeting a month, we should be able to get that to you if our meetings are on Tuesday, not just the Friday before, but the Friday before that. Does that make sense?
And that city council gets their board meeting information 10 days before their board meeting.
And this would be somewhere between eight and 10. I'd have to go back and work with the team, but it would be closer to what the city council has versus what you're getting now.
Are you finished?
And then a board member, they can request a special meeting, correct?
I believe that's what the policy says. I haven't looked it up. It hasn't happened before, so yes, they can. It's, it can request it. You still have to be able to get three people in order to be able to conduct a meeting.
Correct. Board members can request board meetings and/or agenda items or executive sessions.
Board Member Warner.
So I completely disagree with everything that you're saying, Dr. Menzel. It's really sad for our community that we're here today and talking about this. It absolutely lacks transparency. And our community, the way that they get to participate in what is going on in our district is by watching these meetings. And again, it's, you know, we can't govern through marketing or through B memos. And I just find something very fishy about this whole situation, and that's my opinion. And I will not be voting for it today. And I've been watching my emails. Emails are already coming in. This is not something that our community wants.
Board.
Go ahead, Dr. Hartwells.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify, I too have been in touch with the community, and I've heard no such concerns. I think there's an appreciation for the streamlining efficiency and effectiveness. And I've not heard any concerns about not being able to interface with governing board members or Dr. Menzel or the administration. So I appreciate this effort at efficiency and effectiveness and transparency.
Board Member Kearney.
Thank you, President Sanowski. So, Dr. Menzel, you said to me that the staff, they're too busy and don't have time to prepare for the board meetings. And I agree with you. They are busy, and they're in all directions. When we received your committee, you know, there's at least 10 superintendent committees going on. This S U S D and focus group, I find it very ironic that this is starting for next school year when we're talking about taking away board meetings, but starting up these monthly meetings with 40 community members that we will be spending money on to pay for dinner and bus tours while we have fewer public board meetings. If, if, board members, if you vote to change this to the shortened meeting calendar next year, we must change policy B E D B for agenda as there will be no time for association updates. There'll be no time for student-staff celebrations, recognitions. There'll be no time for student advisory board, you know, to come up and give updates. And there'll be no time for superintendent reports. We have way too much to do. So if you approve this tonight, we must change policy B E D B and get rid of all of those things I just mentioned.
Respectfully, Board Member Kearney, I disagree with you on that because this is not how people associate and reach out and learn to trust our district. They learn to trust our district by engaging at the community level, their local public school, not by watching us govern the district and make decisions. So I disagree with you 100% on that. I think teacher, or our community members learn to trust what we do by what goes on on our campuses. They are engaged with their children at the campus level. That's how they find out what we're doing and the relationship between their children's teachers and them as family members, not by us making governance decisions. So all these extra things that are being, you know, proposed for future work in our district, I think are validations of increasing transparency, increasing outreach, increasing communication with our community, just the opposite of what you're saying. At this time, I'd like to make a motion.
I have one more thing I'd like to say, please.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2023-24 governing board meeting calendar. Is there a second on that?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. All in favor to approve the governing board meeting calendar as proposed here? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No.
That motion passes 3-2. And at this time, we're going to back up to our initial executive session information. So I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second.
There's been a second made by Board Member Lindsey. All in favor to move into executive session at this time to discuss the K E B complaint? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes 5-0. We are going to move into executive session. The time is 8:50 P M. It's 9:35 P M. Today is Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. I make a motion to leave executive session at this time. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Warner. All in favor to depart executive session at this time? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? I didn't hear Dr. Hartwells. Dr. Hartwells, did you vote in on that?
I did. I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Couldn't hear that. The motion to depart executive session passes 5-0. We are here to discuss the K E B complaint. And our options are to either deny or uphold the appeal. I'm going to ask our council to go over the levels of disciplinary action for employees to be considered because I think it's important that everyone understands the different options. Here, if we are to consider one.
Madam President, members of the governing board, the board has two options, in my opinion, this evening under governing board policy K E B. One is to deny the appeal filed by the parent adverse to the school nurse. The effect of the denial would be to end the matter, and the Level 2 review would stand. The second option is to sustain the appeal filed by the parent adverse to the school nurse. And if the board did that, then you would recommend to the government, to the district administration, the pursuit of discipline adverse to the relevant employee. Levels of discipline under board policy and under A R S 15341, minor discipline includes a letter of reprimand, a suspension with or without pay up to 10 days. If you were talking about something other than minor discipline as defined under state law, then you would be talking about a statement of charges and/or a recommendation to long-term suspend the employee, and those would require further board action.
Isn't there also an option for a letter of direction?
Letters of direction are not actually discipline under your board policy.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. Governing board members? Well, seeing that no one is coming forward on this, I would like to make a motion to deny the appeal. Is there a second on that?
I have a comment.
Do we have a second?
No. No, we don't. You don't have a second.
Yeah, second, second. It was me.
Okay, thank you. We can now, now you can make the comment. Thank you.
We just have to do better with our protocols and communication with our parents. This was a failure in communication. And I'm really sorry that this all happened and just really hope that, you know, as a district, we can do better, better to each other as staff members, and then also better with our parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Warner. And I concur with that, with our communication can improve. In similar situations, I agree that if it was my child, I'd want to know. And I probably wouldn't appreciate that they're missing school for half a school day. So putting that out there, that would be something that I would like for us to consider to improve our process. And so we have had a motion to deny the appeal and a second. At this time, I will ask for a vote on this. All in favor to deny the appeal? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion passes 4 to 1. The deny of K E B complaint of the appeal has, it's been denied. Right. So at this, pardon me. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this public, here, this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a second.
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes 5-0. Thank you.